Ready? I will now call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Chico Unified School District for March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. It is about five oh three P M and we will be heading into closed session at this time. Seeing that there is no public comment, I will call for closed session and we will return for open session at six P M. Thank you.
All right, good evening. We will now return to regular session. The board was in closed session in the last hour, so we are now reconvening to open session for the regular Board of Education meeting for Chica Unified School District for March 13th, 2024. And with that, we will move on to the flag salute. No action was taken in the closed session, and so with that, I would ask that you all please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know it. All right, we will move on to student reports, please.
Well, I love having students in the gym when we are doing the flag salute. You guys make it that much more exciting. And we have Emma Wilson in the house tonight, and I'd like to invite up Courtney Conley to tell us a little bit about what we're going to hear.
Hello, thank you so much for having us. We'd love to come and present to you. This is, these are some of the highlights at our school. And I just am not going to say many words except for how much I appreciate our second grade team. They do, yes, they're wonderful. Teachers and student teachers both work really hard to do this presentation. And then we also have our wonderful Holly Taylor music teacher who is making magical things happen at our school. And without more, I will hand it over to her.
Thank you so much. All right, are you guys ready? Can I take this to the mic? All right, are you guys ready? Okay.
We are dancing in the forest while the wolf is far away. Do you know what will happen to a creepy part of the shadow place? Wolf, are you there?
I'm eating Taco Bell.
One, two, here we go.
We are dancing in the forest while the wolf is far away. Do you know what will happen to a creepy part of the shadow place? Wolf, are you there?
I'm at Rare Air.
Here we go.
We are dancing in the forest while the wolf is far away. Do you know what will happen to a creepy part of the shadow place? Wolf, are you there?
Yes.
Awesome. So our special guests for this song, we've got Ryan on the wolf part, Romani and Brigata. And basically, I wanted to bring the second graders. This is the first time in years that we have had music, classroom music in the primary classes. And we are so excited to have that happening. And right now, all of the elementary music teachers are working together to, we're all using a similar teaching method called CODI. And basically, we're teaching concepts through games, and you saw an example of text improvisation. I had no idea what she was going to say. She made that up on her own. And that's just kind of part of, part of meeting the standards and also just helping our young kids learn about music in a way that they can relate. So thank you so much. And yes, take a bow. Take a bow, you guys. Stand up. And you guys can go ahead and go back in line. And next, I want to introduce the second grade team. Emma Wilson, I don't know if you know, this is a certified kindness school. It's something that, I think we've been doing this for three years. And it's a whole program that is basically, we track the number of kindness, acts of kindness on campus for about a month, I think. And it's been pretty fun. This is my first year at Emma, and this has, it's been pretty fun just to see those acts of kindness happen. And our amazing second grade team has put together a presentation with their students as part of that celebration of kindness week. So come on up.
To be humble, to be kind. It is a giving of peace in your mind. To a stranger, to a friend. To give in such a way that has no end. We are love. We are one. We are how we treat each other when the day is done. We are peace. We are war. We are how we treat each other and nothing more. And to be bold, to be brave. It is the thinking that the heart can still be safe. And the darkness can come quick. The danger's in the anger and in the hanging on to it. We are love. We are one. We are how we treat each other when the day is done. We are peace. We are war. We are how we treat each other and nothing more. And tell me what it is that you see. A world it's full of endless possibility. Heroes don't look like they used to. They look like you do. We are love. We are one. We are how we treat each other when the day is done. We are peace. We are war. We are how we treat each other and nothing more. We are how we treat each other and nothing more. We are how we treat each other.
Thank you, Emma Wilson. That is so impressive. You got a bunch of us teared up over here. Okay, we're gonna let Emma Wilson have a couple minutes to move their things.
Thank you all for sharing tonight.
Thank you, parents. We know it's a big challenge to get here, but we appreciate it. So at this point, we're, I'm going to go ahead and move right on into the superintendent's report. And we do have some people that we would like to recognize. And I would like to invite Kristi Telachea up to the podium. Kristi is our principal at Chapman.
Power on. Got it. Good evening. My name is Kristi Telachea, and I'm serving in my first year as principal at Chapman Elementary School. As a new member of the Chapman team, I am grateful for the support of my staff as I have navigated a new campus, school processes, and the logistics of running our school. Luckily, my team at Chapman is one that is grounded in a culture of dedication, teamwork, and support to provide the best possible experience for our students, many of whom are here tonight. From my first day on campus, one member of our team has consistently exhibited all three, and that's our day custodian, Jeff Thomas, lovingly referred to as Mr. JT. Mr. JT was one of the first people I met after accepting my new position. At this first meeting, he walked the campus with me, shared a variety of tips, and finished the conversation with, whatever you need, I got you. I love this school, and I really care about our students. A statement that runs true every day that I work with him. Okay, I'll have to stand here so I can sit there. As the summer ensued, JT worked furiously to make sure my office was ready for me to move in in July. And he made sure our school was sparkling in August. Despite how busy our campus was last summer, staff made mention that their classrooms and the campus had never been so clean. Every day, he continues to do the same, ensuring the multipurpose room is ready for assemblies or dance parties, even when his new principal tells him last minute. He's assisting in the cafeteria during lunchtime and serving as a mentor to myself and multiple new staff members who've taken on cafeteria supervision roles. He's always open to problem-solving safety concerns and serving as my partner in the facilitation of fire and safety drills, reminding me, no worries, we got this. Of course, JT is also beloved by our students, who he kindly greets every day and high fives when they visit his PBIS station to remind them of our behavior expectations. Staff will also attest to his dependability and willingness to always show up to help, even in the messiest of situations. Tonight, I'd like to publicly honor JT for his dedication to our students and staff, his willingness to work with others, and the support he provides to all of us on the Chapman team. It's my pleasure to honor Jeff Thomas, or Mr. JT, for the superintendent's award for classified staff.
Congratulations, Mr. JT. You deserve it, man. Always do.
I appreciate both of you. There you go. All right.
You gotta get a picture.
I'm not sneaking on this picture.
You deserve to, isn't it, darling?
I love having your own cheering session.
I know.
That's right. So we're not going to just stop there. I'm going to invite Heather Su Fuentes up to the podium.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Heather Su Fuentes. I'm the principal at Parkview Elementary School. And tonight is my absolute honor and privilege to stand before you to celebrate an extraordinary individual who embodies the true essence of selflessness, dedication, and unwavering commitment to education. She is magical in her work with students and inspiring to everyone she comes in contact. This award is not just a recognition of excellence, but truly a celebration of a remarkable educator who goes above and beyond the call of duty every single day. I'd like to welcome the recipient up and share a few more things, and I'm really hoping to surprise Lynette Ford. We may have told a couple fibs to get her here. All right, so Mrs. Ford is truly one of a kind. I joke often with her that she needs to wear roller skates at work because she is buzzing around our campus nonstop all day, carrying her basket, and is really, truly a guiding force and inspiration in building and in... in building an environment for students, staff, and families that is a sanctuary where everyone is valued, nurtured, and encouraged to reach their full potential. I took the liberty of asking my staff and some families to give some feedback to, so I'd like to share a couple of the quotes from them. I always like when she cries. It's great. In a good way, haven't you heard? So here are a few comments from staff and families. Lynette is one of the most selfless, caring, and kind individuals. She cares for students and motivates them to learn. Not only is she an incredible support for students, but also for our whole staff. One word: lifesaver. She is supportive and a wealth of knowledge. She is a walking library of resources. She has impacted my teaching and taught me how to build an inclusive classroom that is differentiated and supports all students, no matter what level they are at. Mrs. Ford has shaped the educator that I am, and this type of teacher is what I strive to be one day. She is passionate about her work, positive and uplifting for our whole team. Mrs. Ford has made a positive impact on our site, and we cannot imagine a Parkview without her. From a student, I like that she has snacks for me. She does great things. She listens to me. She talks with me, and she makes me feel happy. Parents have shared that Lynette is often one of the main reasons that they choose to come to Parkview because of her inclusive classroom and the ability she has to spread that across our whole campus. This parent shared, as she was explaining the co-teaching program at Parkview that she's running, I was both amazed and overwhelmed and wondered if it would be the best fit. As I finished our conversation, not knowing what to do, she told me, "You have to trust your gut," and I did. And that continues to be the best piece of advice she's given me as we've navigated some decisions. She listens and values the input from parents and does not let ego get in the way. When a parent says we need to change some goals, she genuinely cares about her students. The success of a student is a priority to her, and she is always willing to brainstorm. Mrs. Ford is definitely a hero. She never seeks recognition or praise for her tireless efforts, and that's why tonight is so special to honor her. Please join me in appreciation for her exceptional dedication, unwavering commitment, and her profound impact on lives in countless students and families.
And I just want to very quickly thank all of the Parkview and Chapman staff who came out to support your teachers. It's amazing. And custodian. And you guys can stay with us or go. It's completely up to you. We'd love to have you stay, but you don't have to.
Hey, Parkview, I just wanna say you guys are looking good out there. Peace out.
I didn't want to embarrass him more, but JT was also at Marsh when I was there, and he always told me to go home because I was always there too late. No, such great people in the district. Watching the kids and just hearing the stories of our staff makes me really proud to still be part of the Chico Unified Team, even from up here, instead of in the trenches. Different kind of trenches, I guess. All right, well, with that, we're moving on to announcements. Does the board have any announcements that they would like to provide at this time regarding upcoming events, or awards, or school-site accomplishments, besides just generally being awesome? All righty, well, we'll move on to items from the floor. Did we have any sign-ups for items from the floor at this time?
We did not have any items for sign-ups.
Okay. Then we will continue to consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item from consent?
I don't want to pull anything, but I would like to make a question of staff when we're done.
Okay. I'm seeing there's no items to pull. I think that now is appropriate to ask questions from staff.
I just had a question. When I was going through the requests for field trips and things on our consent calendar, I noticed that we have three requests from Chico High Softball for trips to tournaments and none from Pleasant Valley. So I was just wondering if that was an oversight. I know we have a new softball Pleasant Valley person.
Probably two factors. I think one of those is that some of these may have come in previous board meetings because they start scheduling tournaments like last fall to be sure that they can actually get in because they're highly competitive. And the second factor may be that if they have scheduled those, some schools prefer to have home tournaments where they can charge admission and have, you know, make some money off those. So I think those two factors probably impacted this consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion on consent?
I'll move passage of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Tennis and a second from Mr. Lando. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote with, starting with Mr. Tennis.
Tennis, aye.
Concan, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It passes unanimously. Excuse me. Thank you, board. Moving on to our discussion action calendar. Educational Services, 9.1.1 is a discussion action item for potential for adding a Chico Unified School District student board member. I'll turn it over to you, staff. Pedro.
Mister.
Good afternoon. How are we all doing? All right. We're gonna have a great discussion today. All right, so today we get to talk about students as potential school board members. We got the clicker over here. So this was brought up as an interest as to, let's explore this and let's see what we can do with this. So with some guidance from board members and from staff, and we went through what we felt is to gain a picture and understanding of the history, and then what it would look like, and then some potential steps that we can do to move forward. Okay, so let's go over the history. So Chico Unified School District had student board members from 2001 through 2005. The last time CUSD student board members participated in board meetings, though, was on 2/16 of 2005. Please notice the difference there as we go through the slides because what you're gonna see is that there's gonna be some discrepancies as to attendance. So just a heads up on that. Because of attendance, the CUSD Board suspended Board Bylaw 9150 and the Administrative Regulation 9150 related to student board members on 11/16 of 2005 due to inconsistent attendance. Just want to give you guys a heads up as to why the inconsistent attendance. It was roughly, we had students involved in a lot of activities. As you start going, moving through the calendar, we're talking about sports, athletics. A lot of students who were, I believe, involved as student board members were also involved in a lot of leadership activities, and they tend to participate in anything and everything. So also, let's see, we believe, because honestly, this happened a long time ago, and as I did some research to try to find some exact details of what it looked like, let's just say that there wasn't personnel here involved with this, and so that made it a little difficult. So we believe that students were appointed as duties of elected ASB officials. So that's how they got to participate as student board members. On 11/16 of 2005, students from the high schools gave student reports at the board meetings. So that was the last time. All right. Legal aspects, and so there's two things that we have to consider here. So if we decide to move forward and/or explore this. One is the first one, that California law requires school districts with one or more high schools to appoint at least one student board member to their school board when petitioned by the district high school students. So meaning it's coming from the students. And they need to get 500 signatures or 10% of the high school students in the district.
Question. Sorry. Is that 500 signatures or 10%, whichever is higher or lower?
Correct. Whatever's higher.
Whichever's higher, okay.
Uh huh. And that's as per California Education Code 35012. Now, if it's something that our school board is looking to go through, there's also this little caveat, and the caveat says the following: "A student who is elected to serve as a member of the governing board of a school district must be enrolled in a high school or of the high school district, or Chico Unified School District, and be chosen by the pupils enrolled in high school or high schools of this district." So just want to throw that out there. Okay, so what happens if we do bring forth students as school board members? What do they have the right to do and/or participate? And so the first thing is, they have a right to attend all meetings. They have a right to receive all open session materials. They have a right to ask questions during open session. They can also be appointed to subcommittees. They can be briefed by staff, be invited to attend other functions that require board presence, make motions on matters upon which the board can act. That is key. They can make motions. Attend trainings and conferences. It is a one-year term that begins in August and goes through July. So, and they can also express their opinions and perspectives through preferential voting. What that means is, they can vote, however, it does not count. It is just a strong opinion, or an opinion, depending on how you take it. And so just want to make sure that everybody is clear on that part. Student school board members may not do the following: participate and/or receive closed session materials. So they're not allowed in closed session. Be included in determining the vote required to carry any measure before the governing board of the school district. And then be liable for any acts of the governing board of the school district. And not to be considered members of a legislative body of a local agency for purposes of the Ralph M. Brown Act. So we'll go with that. So another thing that was asked of us was to, all right, let's just say that we do have student board members. What does the compensation look like? So I'm just gonna throw this out there that as board members, you would have to direct us to say, okay, hey, listen, we're gonna create the 9150, and then we're gonna have to dictate whether or not we're gonna pay them. Okay, so that's a piece. And the way that it works out in our school district is because we're over 10,000 students, it would be equal to 4,000. Sorry, 4,000. Can you imagine that? 400. That'd be expensive. So $400 per month per student.
And that would be optional.
It would.
We would choose whether or not we wanted to compensate. If we, is it like a go-no-go? Like if we choose to, if the board were to choose to go this route and then choose to compensate the student board member, it would either be that or nothing, or is there...
Well, there is a compensation piece, and that's the next component, which we do, they are entitled to these transportation services. So we would have to pay for their transportation to be here.
Right, so at least pay for mileage reimbursement.
Correct, yes.
And training, if there was training that we wanted.
Anything beyond that, it would need to be written into the bylaws of 9150.
Okay.
So us paying for their transportation here, what would that entail?
My guess, or not guess, but they would need to fill out a mileage sheet and document from their home to here, and then from here back. And so whatever mileage that is, and they'd be paid accordingly per mile. What are we at now? Sixty-seven cents per mile.
Which I think we're also entitled to, but I don't know that any of us submit for that.
Well, maybe.
Grayer.
Yeah. I can only tell you that ed code applies to students, so, all right. So want to now talk about how we have gotten input in the past because before, we did have student board members, and then that went away. So then how is it that we got student participation, input, and information to our school board members? And this is how we have done it since then. The first part is presentations and reports from students. And they could come here and they could talk about, like, for example, the CTE programs that have been going on. So that's an example of how students come to this place, and they present their information in regards to the programs. There's also, they can come up here for public comments as we have had students come up here and express their concerns and/or opinions. There's also student forums, panels, surveys, the ASB input, and LCAP meetings, which are extremely important, at least for us, in our LCAP plan. And so, and of course, the school board approves the LCAP plan, and we make sure that all the information and input that's presented to us by our student groups is included in some way, shape, or form, and that we take everything that they say in a serious matter. And so I do want to show the following to you. And so here are our LCAP meetings, the ones that we had in the fall. We meet with elementary, alternative ed, the junior highs, and high schools.
About how many students from those meetings?
So approximately two to three students from every elementary school site. From alternative ed, you're talking from two to three students from every alt-ed campus. Junior highs, it could be anywhere from three to four students from each junior high. And then high schools, same thing, anywhere between three, and I think our last one was seven, students from each high school. And then they represent, let's say, just a huge difference in terms of populations of students. And then in the spring, we do it again. And so we have elementary, alt-ed, junior highs, high schools. And we try to bring in a different group of students so that we get a bigger understanding. And then we ask the same questions or similar questions that are in the LCAP and make sure that our goals are meeting and that we're meeting the needs of our students. We also do the following. We also send out Kevin's secondary pulses. I'm curious to see how many of our school board members know what Kelvin is. Are we... yeah. Okay, so it is an SEL questionnaire that, and what it is, it sends out to all our students, and it comes across as a little dog pop-up, if you will, that pops up on the screen, and it tells all our students, hey, listen, there is a Kelvin pulse. There are two, three, four, or five questions or more that we are asking you to answer. And that's, those surveys, if you will, can be about SEL, social emotional learning, things that are happening around the schools and/or campuses, safety, so on and so forth. Okay, so I also want to provide some, I just showed you how we have student input. Now I want to provide some additional ideas. Here's some additional ideas. Participation in policy discussion. We can always do that. We can always bring students together, invite them, and get input. We can always do that, we can always bring students together, invite them and get input on some, anything that the school board deems that they want student input. Student feedback, school boards may seek input from students through feedback sessions, uh, allowing our students to, you know, hey, listen, this is what we did, what's your feedback on that? Provide us some details. And then we could also do workshops with students. So here's some extra ideas. Now, let's just say that we do decide to continue to pursue the idea of having students come in or vote them in, so on and so forth. Uh, students from all high schools, once again, may nominate and elect their representatives through student government elections. And so this democratic process allows students to have a choice in choosing their peers to serve on the school board. So if our school board here wants us to continue, uh, to, um, I guess, see if we can get some student board members, then we would have to go through an election process.
Board members, how many would there be at the same, at once?
Well, that would be, um, a direction and a discussion that would need to come from, uh, the direction of our school board, whether they want one representing all three sites or one from each secondary site. And what that would look like in terms of voting, well, it could look like this. We can do one vote for three, maybe one from each, or, or every single site does a vote for their representative. But there's also, I'm going to, um, well, let's get to this slide. In order to do that, the school board, um, working with us, we would need to have a, a discussion. A discussion about what those requirements look like. So for example, uh, GPA, um, classes that you would see them want to be in. Uh, maybe, uh, they need to be a junior, maybe they need to be a senior. Maybe they, you know, any of these, uh, qualifications that you feel, um, are needed to be on the board. Now, um, just want to throw that out there. I also, um, actually not just myself, but Mr. Marchand and I, we spoke with our leadership teachers. And before I go on, uh, with this information, I think it's important, um, for you to understand that there were certain things brought up by our, um, student government teachers from Chico High and PV. One of them was, hey, listen, we live in some contentious times where sometimes our public, um, can be very difficult. What do we do to protect student board members? How would we protect them? Knowing that there are issues that sometimes, hey, this is, this is going to become pretty hot topic. Are they going to be safe afterwards? So they wanted the school board to consider that. There's a, anoth, uh, another issue. Uh, students stop participating and start coming because, I hate to say this, school board meetings were kind of long. And so they were here for a very, very long time. And so is there a way that the students can participate for, um, maybe one hour, two hours, or whatever our school board deems necessary? And with that, I am ready for any of your questions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, anticipating that this was going to come up as a topic for discussion, maybe six months ago, uh, a former PV student visited from Europe. And while we were having lunch, I asked about, I guess I knew he had served as a school board student rep. I asked about that experience. It was not a positive experience for him according to, um, his recollection. And so I asked why. And, um, it was, after the first couple of months, the other schools did not provide him with the input that he expected that he was going to have in order to share with the school board. Um, the fact that his vote was advisory and didn't carry any other weight was sometimes frustrating. Um, a, and, and so he said to me, it was not a positive experience, period. So then last week happened. Last week? I attended an LCAP, um, meeting with representatives that the three, that we were outlining, the elementary students, the junior high students, and the senior high students. Oh my gosh. I was so impressed with the amount of, um, input from all of the student levels. Um, and at the senior high level, um, well, let's in, include the, uh, the middle school too, but especially at the senior high level, very forthcoming sharing. There was certainly no hesitation at all to discuss issues that they chose. Some of the stuff you prompted them for input on and, you know, they followed through with that. But other things, they volunteered in, in areas that were of concern to them. And, um, so between that experience and tonight, what I was contemplating was using the model that we already have established. And you outlined, you know, how we, we do it several times a year. And set, um, guidelines for, say, a quarterly, um, gathering of, of students. We do it twice a year now.
That is correct, once in the fall and once in the spring.
Maybe adding another one might, you know, might be advisable. Obviously, some of the topics that they brought up were not on your list.
You know, what's interesting is when you involve students in what I call a democratic process, it empowers them.
Oh, yes.
And they feel free and, you know, we create, we try to create an environment where the students feel free and open to express themselves and their concerns. Um, and, uh, I, I'd like to say that, you know, we, we do that. Um, of course, we can always improve, we can always make adjustments. Um, but I'd like to say that I think we do a pretty good job.
They definitely were engaged and involved and no hesitation whatsoever to share what their issues were as well as responding to what you were asking them to share. So here's my suggestion. Um, the process to do the elections, the, you know, all of that other stuff you outlined is arduous. And it doesn't guarantee, because again, as my friend who served as a board rep, uh, pointed out, there's no guarantee that input from any source other than the one he was providing was going to reach the board. So here's my suggestion, is that we, on purpose, ask at the end of these LCAP-designed forums, ask the, um, the students to do a, um, say a bullet point, um, for input to the board. Um, something simple that can be brought to the board and say, yep, this is what came out of the conversation. Um, I think that would, um, eliminate some of the concerns about student safety, you know, uh, they're on camera, it's not TikTok, but, you know, something they, if they're in person at a board meeting, you know, it lives on forever. Um, a, and I, I, I just think it accomplishes what our, what our goal is. Um, I certainly feel the input from students was, um, one of the more valuable things that I, um, participated in as a board member this last year. So that's my suggestion, that we have a, say, three meetings a year. Use the two LCAP ones that we are, um, already designed to have. And then a, a third one where the board suggests maybe, um, topics for that discussion. And, and leave it as an open forum when the students meet with, with, there were three administrators, I think, at that meeting. And, and different administrators depending on the grade levels. Um, I don't think we need to get any more, um, constrained, shall I say, than that. And yet accomplish what we need, which is to hear from students. And I know that some of what they brought forward, we're not going to have as a topic here. But boy, was it, there were two that were really important to those students. So I'm done.
Um, in the last couple of months, have you been, as you've been kind of, uh, data gathering and pulling the presentation together? I know that it's been recommended to reach out to Shasta County Office of Ed, Shasta Union High School, and I think Paradise also as regional, um, folks or districts who already have student board members. What has been the general feedback that, um, the district has received from those, um, programs that have this going now rather than twenty years ago?
My conversations have revolved around two things. They do get one student's input. I will be very direct, that I was looking for more global input from a wider body of students.
So they don't have a process from where those students are meeting with a broader range of students and
They, they do.
Gathering that and bringing that forward?
Yes, uh, that, the topics are, would need to be directed much like, um, Mrs. Robinson said, and then brought forth to the larger audience and have that discussion and then return. So, um, I'm not sure if it's, we're, we're talking school size differences and different amounts of high schools. And so while we, uh, were able to reach out to Paradise, it doesn't necessarily reflect, uh, the feasibility, um, and also the, um, not only the feasibility, but the, um, I, the data gathering or the information gathering that we would need at our size of schools.
Right, but other districts are doing this that are similar to our districts in the state and we don't really have anecdotal information from them.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I think that this came forward from the board, um, specifically to address, I think, the need or the identification of, of, or recognition of the need to have more direct input from students. We get the, the data that's been gathered and analyzed and put together and packaged really nicely. Um, and it feels sometimes, you know, synthesized. And it would be great to have a, a stronger student voice that gives that feedback directly to the board. And frankly, same from, from the staff, from teachers in classified, um, coming straight from school sites. You know, there's, um, I think that there has been a, a consistent message that has been conveyed from the trenches, um, that the board feels kind of like a, a, a degree removed from getting that direct feedback besides what we get in our email inboxes, which frankly is usually, you know, advocate types. And that's not always the general consensus or the people who, you know, are just having these conversations in these types of meetings. And like the LCAP meetings are important, but only two happen a year. So I think that the, the big question is, is what, what are some solutions that we can move forward with to get that direct student voice? And student board members is an official program that has been, um, it has been, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, uh?
Utilized, implemented?
Yeah, more or less, or, um, championed is not the word, but it'll work, um, by CSBA and other, you know, types of, um, entities that are consulting with districts for, for that purpose specifically. And I'm not saying that I'm here tonight to definitely move forward with student board members, but like what are, what are actionable things that we can do to ensure that we are receiving meaningful and genuine feedback, authentic feedback from our students, especially secondary students, middle school and high school, to help us drive decision-making as a, as a, as a, as a board?
If, that is a question that you're asking me, uh, I would, uh,
It's for the university.
Go, go back to the vehicle of student LCAP meetings and then utilize that as a way to get information on direct topics that the school board feels they want input from the students. And have those person, person-on-person conversations and, and understand and, and I always say that you got, uh, this is going to sound horrible, but you got to go straight to the horse's mouth. Anything that's secondhand or thirdhand, it can get misconstrued and or misinterpreted. The best feedback
Isn't that politics, Pedro?
That is politics. But the best way to get student information is always to have those conversations with them.
Or to have a student right up here as we were talking. It seems like you can't get much closer to the horse's mouth than having someone up here.
Yeah.
So I hear that there is an argument to be made for just having more LCAP meetings. But if we're just looking for anecdotes from students, having a student on the board is a way to do that. And I do think that we need to work really hard to have every one of the items here that, especially about ed services that directly affect students. I mean, we may bring up things that students didn't consider before, but still will end up having an opinion about. Um, I also wonder about whether students feel like they would benefit from that voice. And I would like to, um, at some point, reach out to our high schools and just say, hey, do you guys think you'd benefit from having a student up there during these discussions as well?
When we talked to the both, um, teach, uh, teachers at PV and, uh, Chico High, they said they could get that information out, they would just want to know what the purpose, what would, you know, um, I think some of the things that, the scope of what, what we wanted from them, um, so they could get that information out. Talking to Kathleen Bishop, who oversees, uh, the civic, um, seal for them. She said that we could obviously bring it to, to the students that are looking for that at both, uh, both schools to see if they want to be part of the, um, part of their civic duty. Uh, but they said they would need to know that the scope and or, of what we would want them to be, how that we'd want them to participate so we could bring it out to see if there was an interest or not. They said that they could get that out. Um, but they would just, they had just questions, you know, um, when, that they shared, they're going to have more forth. But they said, what would be the purpose and role of student rep? To provide feedback, to give the pulse of the campus, provide updates on what's happening on the campus? Uh, would you want updates or what's the pulse of the three different campuses and students? Importance of having three ro, reps, would you want them to rotate? Would you want just one, three? Um, uh, what is the level of involvement the board desires of the students? And so those are some of the things that they were asking. And though I said that we would, this was a topic on the agenda item and then, um, if we add more clarification, we would bring it back to them.
And I feel like I need to jump in here because, uh, I let Pedro answer a question that actually I had information on. And that was talking with other districts. I do have the opportunity to meet with, um, other superintendents, both in our county and outside. And I did bring this up at a recent me, uh, meeting, just asked, you know, how many districts did have them and what the experience was? Most had them either elected as a specific office, um, and that was, they ran for that office and were elected at their school site. Or it was part of another office that they ran for, most commonly vice, uh,
Vice president.
Vice president of their class, ASB vice president. Then part of their duties was to come to board ma, meetings and be a student board member. Um, when I asked what the experiences were, were they positive or not? This won't shock anybody. It really varied from year to year and it really depended upon the student. Um, that there were some students that were all gung ho, you know, they were all in, they read all the documents and they were up on it. Um, but there were, you know, years in between where that was not the case. And, you know, when things were heavy reading or not, um, topics that maybe were of interest specifically to topics that maybe were of interest specifically to the students, then the participation and attendance waned. So that's probably not a shocker to any of us.
Do you know if those particular districts that you talked to had an appointed board member mentor for those student board members? I just know that that was a thing at the presentation that I had gone to.
I'm sorry, I did not ask that question. I will say, I'm just going to keep rolling. I do think there's a variety of ways that we can do this. You know, we certainly can have a student board member. We can have one from each school because we do have three high schools that attend. I mean, those are options. We can also look at getting specific input into agenda items by having each of our existing student government classes. Each of the schools already have them. We could ask that they go through each agenda and submit information to us. And if there are items on those agendas that they feel strongly about, that they come and present to us, that would be one way. We could go back to something that we did literally a decade ago now, when I was in Jay's position and we would meet on a monthly basis with our ASB president and vice presidents from each school and go through very specific, at that point, we had a strategic plan and we asked student input on the different points of the strategic plan. Probably not that different since our LCAP is now our strategic plan. It was just more frequent and with a set group of students. So there's, there's a multitude of ways to go about getting student input. So just, those are just a couple.
I'm not seeing any additional questions, technical questions for clarification from the board. So Pedro, thank you for your time in putting that together. I certainly think that there's more context we could probably dig into if we, if the direction was given by the board to, you know, pursue this idea or these sets of ideas so that we can maybe come to a conclusion of what may fit best for the district. So, you know, coming out of this discussion, this board probably has the opportunity to, to make a motion or recommend some suggestions of how to take a next step forward in exploring certain avenues of getting meaningful student input for our board meetings. I think that the ultimate goal here would be to get meaningful feedback on items or what they think is important to maybe potentially place on a future item or agenda for, that are coming from the students. So, you know, if we can continue the conversation and brainstorm on, on some of those avenues and give you direction to pursue that, if that's where we want you to spend your time and energy, then that hopefully will come out of this discussion tonight. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pedro.
Stay close.
Don't go far. With that, I don't think we had any public comments signed up for this, but I will ask if anybody has public comment at this point after hearing the presentation that wants to address the board on this particular topic. All right, seeing none. Is there a particular motion anybody would like to make so that we can have a discussion around this? Eileen?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we receive a report from the two scheduled LCAP student input meetings provided in the form of a summary by administrative staff that have, I don't say run, but facilitated, there we go, those meetings.
Can you repeat that, please?
That we request a report from the student input LCAP meetings provided in the form of a summary by staff facilitators.
Don't we kind of get that in, in the LCAP report? Like I recall seeing a little box saying, "Students at this meeting said that blah, 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 blah."
There is-
Yeah, you'll get a summary of what the students say through the LCAP.
Would you say like within a certain timeframe, you know, so-and-so, you know, at the next meeting after an LCAP student meeting?
It should be easily, well, I'm speaking for staff, but I think it should be easily provided, the meeting following the LCAP student input meeting. Where's Tina? There you are. What I'm looking for, because off the top of my head, I don't remember how specific the LCAP recreation of the student input meetings is.
So in the LCAP, we do list all of the input from elementary students, junior high and high school. Sometimes they, you know, we don't put every single entry. The student says, we find that they oftentimes will say similar things. But we get all of the themes in there as well as all of our groups that we meet with. We include that input as well.
That basically would be what my motion would recreate. We don't need, now, when are they?
That would come to us in June, right?
Huh?
That comes to us in June?
Yes.
And the first sets of meetings are in?
They were, they'll be collected from last fall and into the spring that just happened.
Right. So I think that more to that point would be that we would, we would have received the, the first sets of meeting input in the fall before the end of the semester, right after those had taken place.
Good, good point, that it would need to be-
We wouldn't be waiting six to eight months to see student feedback from the fall? Is that, is that kind of where you're going with that, I mean?
Yes, thank you. That, that is, that point is pertinent because we don't want to wait the whole year to not knowingly address what the students have told us. And after attending those meetings, the students tell us a lot. I can, I'm still wanting to recreate the energy when Mr. Sullivan asked the question at the elementary student input about science? And did they want more science? I've never seen a group of, what was it, 37 elementary students respond, emas. Instantly, the arms shot up and you knew immediately that that room full of students wanted more science.
So Eileen, can I just sort of friendly amend your motion? Because we don't have a second yet to say that the board would give direction to receive a report from the two sets of student input LCAP meetings to provide a summary within four weeks following each set of student meetings?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. I'll, I'll second it, just so we can discuss and, you know, see if there's any other direction that we want to go in particular, just to move the conversation forward.
And I would just add that could, report could come from staff or we could ask for student volunteers to come to the board meeting to present that information so that it is clearly coming from them.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that. All right, the floor is open for discussion on student input to the board.
I would just observe that the LCAP people, students who participate in the LCAP meetings, by definition, are, in most cases, part of a unique, you know, demographic or just otherwise designated category and are not necessarily a-
Generally from our targeted students?
Right. They're not, they're not sort of like a broad assessment from the student body. They're, they're sort of a targeted, you know, group of people. Targeted is a good word to use because that's the word that the code actually uses.
Right. Do you want to provide clarification on?
Not that that's, that their perspective is not valuable. I mean, it is. It just should be noted that, I think if we're looking at the, the concept, if you will, of a student board member, I think that maybe this person is kind of representative of, of, of the student body as a whole, not necessarily a narrow sliver that's part of one of the target categories.
I can't say that a lot of our students are representative of many different, I guess, for lack of better words right now, categories.
Repeat that, please?
Our students are very representative, not just one, but many different categories that represent the LCAP and others.
Can you name the LCAP meetings for me, please? That student, that used, utilized students?
I'm not sure of the question. What do you mean by that?
There are a variety of LCAP meetings that occur, right? Can you please name the different?
Elementary, junior high, high school, and then all dead.
So for high school LCAP meeting, it's like, "Hey, high schoolers, come on, come on down. We want to hear from you."
Our administrators, well, the process goes like this. We reach out to our secondary administrators and we say, "We want a select group of students that represent all, all these different demographics. Please send them." And that happens at the first one. And then we try to get a second set for a different, a different group of students for the second one.
So you said all these different demographics. Can you fill that out a little more?
Yeah. So for example, if you are looking for one specific one, I'm going to give you a great example. Our students fit more than just one bill. We have, for example, Spanish-speaking Latino who also ELD, who are also taking AP classes, who are also low SES. We have BIPOC students in many different categories. And we have, I mean, it's, and we have white. And so we do have a strong representation. I don't know if that's what you were asking.
You almost had me thinking that it was a general, just kind of a carte blanche, come one, come all. But then you, that one little thing you said sort of tipped me off. No, that, that we are targeting then.
We do have to-
I accept that people over, over, we're all in our midst.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So to answer your question, we do have to be, I guess, purposeful to get a broad range of understanding and also representation.
So I would say from my vantage point, it's a little bit opaque. You know, of how somebody gets in the position where there, there'd be a special, you know, mouthpiece to the board. I mean, I can take it, okay? Whoever wants to come in here and give me their opinion, I'm ready. Actually, it's available to anyone, anytime. They can come in here anytime and they can give their opinion, no matter who they are, whether they've been to an LCAP meeting or not, you know? And, and I'm totally fine hearing the opinion of some member of the public, whether they just walked in or whether they were specifically chosen by administration because they represented a variety of different target categories. So, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Madam President?
Go ahead, please.
Having been at those meetings, I watched as the cars pulled up in the parking lot and the principals got out with their student reps at the elementary level. I think there were three to four students per principal that walked in. And then after we got gathered, students introduced themselves. And then during the discussion, because we were there an hour and a half to talk with these students, you had foster children, you definitely had representation from every ethnic group. You had, and there were, the principals didn't stay in the room. Principals dropped their kiddos off and went back to the parking lot in their cars. So what you had in that room were all of these kids, three administrators. And they didn't know the three administrators before they were introduced. So you had an amazing representation of all of our kids. At the junior high, same thing. You, you couldn't have created a more diverse student group. Same thing at the senior high level. You had students that were in honors programs, you had AP students, you had special ed students, you had BIPOC students, an athlete, two athletes actually, that were competing at the, at the senior high level. The diversity was apparent. And their input was also diverse because of their specific experiences with school, with their homes, with their programs, with their desires for what they wanted to do when they got out of school. I mean, you name it, there was a, there was a diverse input back to us from those kids. I don't know how you could have gotten it any better.
Is this the time where we're just basically sharing? Kelly mentioned one idea that, to me, I don't know, sort of jumped out as what I think might be a good option. And that is the one, the idea where the already existing student body leadership classes from, from all the schools would have the opportunity ahead of time to have access, review the agendas and have the opportunity to come forward and share on topics that may be of more interest to them. I feel like maybe there's such a wide range of topics that, I hate to use the term, are over their head, but quite honestly, I mean, one year in, there's quite a bit on my, that I find I'm still learning. And it may just not be of interest or really relatable for them, some of the things we're talking about. Although I think some topics certainly are very interesting and, and they most certainly would have opinions on. So just maybe providing an opportunity for them to review the agenda. They can be heard in a designated time in the meeting, but then also have the opportunity, respecting their, their time commitments, to exit when, when necessary or when needed to be able to fulfill, you know, school, other school obligations. And, I mean, we could see possibly how that went for a season, maybe a year or less. And if it was well-received and students were really loving the opportunity. I mean, it could expand maybe more into a, a position on the board. I, I don't know that I love the idea of three students at one time. You know, I mean, at that point, they're obviously not the majority, but it may just change a little bit of the dynamics that already exist. Not that I don't want to see change, but I just maybe see an opportunity for them to have their say, but also respect their other commitments.
Yeah, I think that there are strengths with a lot of different models. You know, I like this idea. I, my, like, I feel like I maybe, aspect of it that might not be as strong is that you may be getting a narrow, a narrower representation by just having input from leadership classes. You know, we may be missing some of those voices from those groups that aren't necessarily represented in a leadership class. And that's, that's not a bad thing as long as you're also capturing input from those other student groups. So maybe there's an opportunity for a combination of that. We could look at reconfiguring our LCAP student input meeting schedule and increase it to three or four and get another like smattering of, of students to make sure we really are getting representation from, from all, you know, or capture as broad of a background as we can. And I think to the extreme, if, you know, we go from, from kind of just making what we're already doing more robust, which I think is a, not as heavy as a, of a lift, right? As like implementing a whole student board member position. Not that it can't be done, but, you know, a student board member, if we had it be one person who maybe was elected across all schools, that person, just like we are, are there to represent their constituents, which are the students, right? So it would be on them and they would need the guidance to be able to hear from their peers from the middle schools and high schools and even elementary schools if possible, and be able to know what's, what's- schools if possible, and be able to know what's, what their constituents' concerns are on certain topics on the agenda. And I think that, you know, figuring, navigating that, A, would be a challenge, but also could be really meaningful. So I, I, excuse me, I agree that, you know, any, any of these options or a combination of these will be more than what we're getting now, right? So I think that that's kind of where I'm at right here. I don't want to cut ourselves short and, you know, miss an opportunity at this time to get more robust input. I want to make sure that the input we're getting is meaningful, and that we're setting everybody up for success, so that we're not overburdening any one particular person or staff person or student to be able to obtain that information. So, you know, just keeping those things in mind, I, I wonder if there's a secondary motion, or if we want to, you know, vote on the, this initial motion, or if there's any changes that we want to make, or if we want to add more to the discussion, just to keep it moving along.
Well, I did hear that our leadership teachers, before asking if there was interest in this, because again, my, my big concern is, do, do the students think that the things we're doing are good for students? And I would like to get that feedback from them. So I think after this, I'd like to add a second motion onto this item that's not related to this one, about creating that scope document for those leadership teachers.
Gotcha. And I, I would add to that. I think my, my interest there would be to, it would be nice with our, with our meeting packets to, you know, have an attachment of student feedback, you know, on items that matter to them. So if they think item 9.2.1 is not really something that they care too much about, they don't have to spend any time on it. But if 9.2.3 is something that's really important for them, or they have something to say about it, or they have feedback they want to give, they can synthesize that in that space and have it attached to the agenda packet, for example, as, as a, a potential, like, way to give input.
On that point, you know, how often does a high school student come in here and get up and talk?
How, how often do they know about what we're talking about?
Well, I mean, very rarely. And the reason why they very rarely know is because, well, I mean, I've known all manner of young people. I have known all manner of high school students, including some who, you know, are, are head and shoulders above the rest in terms of their civic engagement and their knowledge of current events and what's going on. The, a lot of these kids are focused on things that, that, you know, maybe are classically luminar minds, as the things that they're into. And for some of them, I know this might shock us with our values and priorities that we have up here, they are not burying their noses in school board agendas twice a month. You know, they're not into it, a lot, in a lot of cases, you know? So, you know, I mean, I, I'm nominally against this. You know, I mean, like I said, I'm always open to hearing what some young person has to say, no problem. But I think we might be creating a sort of an apparatus that's going to, I don't know. It's just, we have an open process to the public, and, and students have shown up here when they've been interested in doing so. I just kind of feel like we're going pretty far out of our way here to create an infrastructure whereby somebody might latch on to it and decide that it's a way for them to, to, to have a platform, which is not the end of the world. I just, I think things are, are complex enough around here, and there's enough opportunities already for members of the public, including our student constituents, to be heard.
Madam President?
Please, please speak freely in this space.
I did want to let the board members know that at all of the gatherings, Mr. Caldera or Mr. Sullivan let the people know what the, the students know, what the purpose of their gathering was, that it was about things that were being done for them at their schools because of the money that was awarded by the board through the LCAP that provided services for them. And then they were asked, we want to know what services are working, are going well, and you don't want us to take them away? And what things can you see that aren't being provided for you that you'd like to see happening at your school site? So that was the prompt, that, you know, input what's working and what isn't working. And if it isn't working, give us some ideas of how we could make it better. So they did, they did provide input along those lines.
Eileen, could I make another, just friendly amendment to your motion, and increase the number of student LCAP meetings to three, as you had originally recommended? Or is that too different?
Increasing it to three, I'd ask staff, does that work? Is that a problem?
I would say like a fall, winter, and, you know, early spring.
One and a quarter.
Yeah. Not four, but, you know, one in the fall, I think, would be appropriate. But then one in kind of the early, you know, semester, second semester, and then maybe even later in the, after most of the LCAP has been put together, kind of towards the end of the year, to get that final, like, input from students going into the next school year.
Yeah, we can, we can add, we, we can speak to them as much as we need to speak to them. I mean, we ask our administrators to bring them. If it would have to be a case, if you want the same students or different ones each time, which we've been doing different ones, so we could get multiple students giving us their input. But we clearly can add more meetings if the board wishes.
Yeah, we don't even have to necessarily call them LCAP student meetings, they just are student input meetings.
Well, the one in the fall is just student input. Before, we used to just do one in the, in the spring to get student information, but we decided we were going to add another one in the fall to get more input. So we just, it's just a student input meeting.
I don't know if that's, if that's necessary now. We can maybe talk about it more later, too, but-
And I do think if we're going to go this route, and it is truly for, I mean, obviously both staff input, but board input, then we should have some questions from the board for each of those three meetings that are important, that the board wants input on, that we can specifically ask. And then, by all means, board members up to two could attend as well, if this is the direction, which I don't know that it is.
I would consider increasing and adding additional meaning of friendly amendment. I would support that.
Okay, so that makes this, that makes this a little bit more robust, because it's not just a report at the end of the, what we're already doing, it's adding a little bit more to what we're already doing. It's getting more, more feedback three times in the year instead of just two. But, yeah, I would be happy with that change, if we could add that to this motion. It's a motion to increase our student input meetings to three and get feedback within four weeks to the board as a summary from those meetings. And the caveat that the board will also-
We also give out three student surveys during, to go to, that goes out to all students during the year, three different times during the year, too, if you guys want that, the information that we get back from those surveys also, to give you guys more clarifications, because, again, that's available for the board also.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not seeing any further discussion from the board, so let's just go ahead and vote. We'll start with Member Robinson, since this was your motion. We'll do a voice vote starting with you.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to repeat it, or do you want me to say what I think it is?
We need to have the clerk or secretary-
You go, you go ahead with what's, what, what you have recorded, I think is what's most important.
The motion was made by our Member Robinson, amended by our President Delby, excited by our President Delby. The present motion on the floor is to direct staff and provide a board summary report of the two single LCAP student meetings reported in the student meeting for a three-year student input for the year, and four of the several LCAP.
Yeah, and just for clarification, it's not a report from each individual student meeting, but it can be a cumulative report from the groups of students, right? Because you don't have just one meeting with those four groups. You have four meetings of those four representative groups, right? Yeah, you don't have a room of elementary school kids and middle school kids and, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so it'd be a report that is, that is combined of those four, not four separate reports, three times in the year.
I've got a point of order.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, what's the word, germane to this agenda item, to be talking about getting an LCAP report as, as, as an action item here? Because I think we were talking about whether to add a new board member, a student board member.
So I think it kind of evolved from how to get a student board member to how to get student input. And if we're talking LCAP specifically, probably not. But since we're talking about student input, and I think there was the recommendation to not call it, not call it LCAP, but to call it student input meeting, I think it ties back to that.
Okay, not to nitpick, but this says that potential, this is a discussion action item on the agenda, potential for adding a Chico Unified School District student board member.
Right.
And I'm just-
And I'm going to assume we're going to get to eventually whether or not we're going to, to do that, or if there's more information that you need for us to do that?
No, I just-
More information to bring back?
I don't want to nitpick, you know? I mean, it seems like this conversation might more appropriate, if we're going to get an LCAP report, seems like that might occur under an LCAP agenda item, not under this one, you know?
Yeah, I think that the, in, you know, it can be subjective, the intent of the student board member is really to get more student input to, directly to the board. And so this is a potentially alternative idea to get more student input. That's not necessarily going full student board member. But I also see your point, that it may be, you know, be considered a step off-
It's not like somebody's going to sue us over it, you know? Probable.
Yeah, and, and truly, like, it, to me, it doesn't have anything to do with the LCAP. It, it is riding the coattails of what we already do for LCAP, but it's really just to make our, our input process from students more robust to the board. So we're getting more frequent feedback directly from students to the board.
Seeing as the meetings, at least, wouldn't take place until next year, if we wanted to move this particular motion to hold an agenda item at our next regular meeting, I don't think that would mess anybody's timing up. And then we could put in specific, I mean, if it'd make you more comfortable if we had it-
I don't want to nitpick.
Oh, I, I know, absolutely. But saying, if, if it's easier to just put on Next Agenda and say, options for getting more student input, I don't think we're breaking anybody's timetable by doing that.
It might not matter, you know, because I, I'm, I mean, I'll, going to give you a preview, a crystal ball here. I'm not going to vote for this, you know? I just, the LCAP thing, I mean, it's, it's the law, it's, it's a fine institution, I think, for helping us identify the ways that we need to reach the target categories of students. But it's not like it's, you know, having your finger on the pulse of what the whole of the student body wants. I also recognize that if we were to handpick, you know, or, or somehow from the student government crowd, there, you know, there's those age-old criticisms of student government and how that comes together. You know, the words popularity contest come to mind. Yeah, I mean, hey, we're living in an imperfect world, and there's always going to be flaws in any system we come up with for, for hearing from our students. I like the, the mechanisms that are already in place, I guess, you know? And I think they've worked really well. I think that when students came in here to talk to us about issues that were important to them, I think it was very powerful. And I think it, it changed minds and swayed things. So, anyway, that's kind of just where I'm at. So to your point, Mr. Lando, go ahead and send it up now. I don't think anybody's going to sue us. I just wanted to make a point that we're a little off here.
So do we want to vote, or is there a secondary motion? Okay, we'll start with, we'll start with you, Ms. Robinson.
Robinson, aye, on the motion that was restated by Erica.
Tennis nay.
Conconny.
Delby, aye.
Lando, aye.
All right. Thank you. We can probably figure out the logistics around that, but providing a report sounds kind of nice to hear or see what, what's coming out of those in real time, or relatively in real time. Thank you. Any, any other additional motions for this topic?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether it needs to be a motion or not, but I would like to put together, or have someone on the board put together, that scope document, because I really do want to know whether our students think having a board member would be valuable. So if I need to move that we, that board members work with staff to create a potential scope document for a board member, student board member position, then I guess I'll make that motion. I don't know if it has to be a motion.
So let me, can I restate that and maybe just add a little bit more?
Take it away.
So you'd like to direct staff to put together a student board member scope document to present to teachers to get feedback, whether or not there's interest in having a student board member, from students?
Yes.
Whether or not students are interested?
Yes.
Okay.
So just for, for clarity-
Let's get it crystal clear.
Yeah, what would, what would go in, what particular parts would be in the scope document?
Well, we need to go back to, I mean, what were the questions, Mr. Marchand, that the leadership teachers wanted answers to?
What's the purpose?
What was the purpose for all the students to provide feedback, to give the pulse of the campus, to provide updates on what is happening on campus? Would you like three different campuses representative? If you are going to go three, will they rotate, or will they come every time? What is the level involvement of the board desires of the students?
So, so we would ask those questions of our student activities advisors, and probably, frankly, other student groups as well, to get input from our students? If they would, I'm, I'm just confused as to what we're, we're doing here.
Yeah, are we giving a survey, or are we going into certain classes? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to get the input from, from the two different high schools and the 4,000 kids.
I think the way that I'm seeing this, and Mr. Lando can correct me if I'm wrong, is basically we'd be putting together like a one-page job description of what a student board member is, and what's expected of them, and how long they serve, and how they're selected, why. We are asking if, if, if this is something that we want to move forward with, and whether or not there is interest from the student body to have that go forward.
Yeah, and so that's why I'm not sure it needs to be a motion, because I'm not sure whether it's something we want staff to do, or it's something that we want to generate. And then maybe present some options to staff, or to, to the board next time, saying, hey, which of these looks like, if we were to have a student board member, which, what does that look like?
And thank you, that's kind of what I was getting at, because there's some key decisions in there that the board would need to make.
Yeah.
Do you want them here for the full time? Do you want one from each high school, or just one?
There's a cart-horse issue going on here.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
And is there going to be some type of criteria, grade point average, attendance rate, grade level, those types of things, too?
And we could make someone, I mean, we can certainly do some drafts for the, the board to look at. I just wanted to be clear what it was that we were doing.
I don't think it has to be that, I don't think it has to be that specific. If we're just wanting to gauge how interested students even are to have a representative sitting up here with the rest of us for this, really, what would that look like? We don't have to really lay out the decisions that the board was, so you'd be, would need to make, whether or not we would have one or three, or, you know, how they would get selected, just what would be a student board member's role if they were sitting up here with the board, and ask them if they have interest in having a representative sit up here with the board. Don't you think?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't realize you had the floor. I, I was just going to inquire, because the presentation tonight outlined what the education code sets up in the way of framework for student board members. So, you know, we'd have to comply with that.
It's still, I mean, all the things we're talking about are still flexible. Yeah, it's vague. It's vague. If, if the student body took the initiative and got 500 signatures from their peers on a petition- on a petition and brought it to the board and said, "We want to have a student board member representing us," then we would have to comply with that.
Right.
And then we can select, we can come up with all of our selection criteria. They wouldn't even have to go through an election process. If we're the ones saying, "We want this," whereas students might turn around and say, "Nobody asked for this," then they would go through the election process and, and select their representative, or numbers of representatives if we decided to go that route as a board. Am I summarizing that well enough?
Just to repeat what you said, if a student out there in the public right now, listening or watching right now, was like, yes, that's 100% for me, they could advocate for themselves.
Yes, yes. A student in our district right now could go and get 500 signatures from their peers and bring it to the board, and we would have to comply under ed code.
So a motivated individual could find themselves in that very role.
Yes, if there's anybody out there listening right now, they could make this process a lot more clear-cut for us. Don't all everybody Russia wants? But maybe, I mean, I like to think, I, I, there are students that I worked with that I, that we've seen lots of times come to board meetings and, and present that, that were also in my classroom as students that I think would have been great student board members. Like, they, they exist in our district. There are amazing students who would be great sitting right up here with us in, in these discussions. And I think that they would give good insight and feedback to what policies we're making here translate into in the classroom, or give us that foresight, too. Like, if you make this decision, this is how it probably will play out on my campus. There isn't that right now, because it's late and they don't want to be here right now. But if there was some way that they opted into that responsibility, or we could get that from them, from in, in the classroom, you know, in a, in a happy medium scenario, you know, that, that would be, that would be beneficial, I think, for, for our consideration. I also think, you know, if, if we eventually did go the route of having a student board member, it's important to recognize, too, that they would have the ability, or would, would, right, they would have the ability to request an agenda item, you know? Just, just like we can, they can make a motion to request, to agendize. As a board, we have the, we, the five of us would make the decision whether or not it went on the agenda. But I think that that's powerful for students to know that they have. And their constituents, the students, that they, that, you know, they, they know that that's their representative, can go to them for that. So I think there's a lot to still explore there. I think that we all probably, it sounds like, agree that, that we could get more input, that, that we're doing good things, but we can make it more robust. We can definitely make improvements on what we're already doing and still see if the interest is there, right, Tom? And just for the record, I did second Tom's motion, if it's a motion, which we hadn't really decided yet, but that's why we're discussing it. But yeah, so do, what's our, what's our path forward here?
How about I just make it a, a formal motion, and we see if it carries anybody, doesn't it? Doesn't, that's fine.
Okay.
I would like to move to direct staff to create a couple of, more than one sample job description for a student board member that we can then forward on to leadership and government teachers at the secondary sites.
I'll second it, because I already pretty much seconded it. It's, I'm just, more than one sample, I'm just a little worried about workload and timeline. So, yeah. What's, what's the product we're expecting? For clarification, discussion? Because I was thinking something way more simple, like just one thing to blast out there and see if there's interest, something simple to gauge interest.
Yeah, we could just, we could do just one, just, because again, the idea is just to get something out to students quickly to see if there's interest. So can I, I will amend my own motion, I guess.
Okay.
A sample, because again, it doesn't have to be perfect. We can take feedback we get, and we can respect the, the considerations.
And will you or we work with staff to massage that out before it gets sent out?
Certainly can. I don't want to do any, like, I don't want to pulling that deliberation away from the board as a whole, but I'm happy to look at that.
Just to make sure that whatever they're sending out is going to give us the feedback that we're looking for?
Yeah.
Is that appropriate? So the, the general thing that we're voting on here, without using all of Mr. Lando's words, is to solicit feedback from students, whether or not they're interested, by providing some information about what a student board member position would entail. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Timeline-wise, one-ish? Is that, is that a May workshop?
Is that reasonable for staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lando, would you like to start our voting?
Lando, aye.
Robinson, nay.
Okay, go ahead.
Tennis, nay.
Conken, nay.
Dolby, aye. It fails, two to three. Any other motions for this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. Thank you, everybody. Gosh, what are we even on? 9.1.2? Yeah, MTSS update on the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS in Chico Unified School District.
Alrighty, good evening. Shifting gears a little bit, we've got a crew here behind me to give you an update on our multi-tiered system of supports, which really, in a nutshell, supports our students' academic achievement, as well as their social, emotional, and behavioral, which does add to that smoother academic achievement that we want for all students.
Question, Tina, before we get started?
Sure.
When was the last time we had an MTSS update?
Was it a year ago?
I think it was about a year ago.
Yeah, Kristi, I believe it was spring, maybe fall? Spring, or maybe early fall? Maybe early fall?
I guess time flies when you're having fun.
Time flies when you're having fun, Mr. Tennis. Yes. We actually have some cool new things, though, that I want you to pay attention to, that she's going to show you, because we're not in the fall-ish presentation that have been created. Quick reminder, you've all seen this before. What is MTSS? It's that multi-tiered system of supports. It impacts every student every day. It's proactive, it's preventative, and it involves all of us. All right, I'm going to pass this on to Kristi Bankson. She's our district MTSS coordinator, who works directly with our elementary-level, junior high, and high, and high school-level teams, for her to continue this update.
All right, good evening. So as Tina said, when we think about multi-tiered systems of supports, you know, we are thinking about that from a, a large district level. And at the school sites, I really, we really want to emphasize that it's really a team approach. So on our school-based intervention teams, there's a wide range of staff that have a wide range of perspectives, that can bring their knowledge to help support students with the varying needs. So that includes our site leads. Right now, we have a point-two site lead at every school site. Our site administrators, the counselors, our wellness counselors, Title I teachers, other teachers, our educational specialists. They include our targeted case managers, speech-language pathologists, and our psychologists. So really, a team approach to looking at the data and supporting the students at our school sites. One of the big pieces that we've really been focusing on this year is using data to make decisions. And through the platform EduClimber, which I think we've shared a little bit about before, tonight I'd like to give you just a very quick live example of what that looks like. We, so EduClimber is a platform that we can house a lot of information from a variety of other platforms. So if we think of, like, attendance, we can get attendance data in there. The students' academic growth and their current academic standings at, at their school sites, and then for their grade levels. Their behavior, social-emotional data points, interventions that they're currently receiving. And we can also use a combination of many of those metrics to, to look at students in, in different ways to support them. So for example, one of the metrics that our secondary sites have in common this year, and I'm going to try to log in very quickly. One of the common thresholds that we have for all of our secondary sites is something called academically disengaged. So we want to look at students who are coming to school, have really great attendance, but their academics may not show that. So they're coming to school, but in this instance, they have three or more failing grades. So staff are notified in a variety of ways, but just to show you a live demonstration of what this looks like. So I'm going to search, so here's all of the students in, in our district at a school-site level. It would just be their school site. And at a teacher level, they would just see, at the elementary level, the, the students in their class, and then at the secondary level, students that are in any of their courses, or that are rostered to them for any of their courses. So if I am, and if I'm on this team of our ESBIT team or our intervention teams at our school sites, one of the ways that I can look for this, this says 2324, right? I thought, yeah, okay. So we can quickly look and see, okay, who currently is, you know, in, within that threshold? Who is coming to school, great attendance, but has three or more failing grades? So at a school-site level, this is great information that we can act on and say, okay. And then from those variety of perspectives, we can say, oh, I know this, or how about we try this? Or what can we do to support this group or this student? So that's just one quick glimpse of how we can use the data that's coming into EduClimber to support, to, to support our students. Another way that we've recently just done with some of our teacher leadership groups was working with them to determine, as students go into junior high and high school, using different multiple data points to determine who might benefit from extra support in reading and/or math, and also who would benefit from being in honors or accelerated math. And then this also allows for that real-time achievement monitoring. As you just saw, that number will change every time new data comes in. So this week, there might be a certain number of students, next, next week, there might be less. So it changes as the data is coming into EduClimber. So when we think about our, our system of supports, this is a graphic from the state of California, where we think of all students, what do all students on our campuses get? We know some students need a little bit more than that, and we know few students need even more intensified support. So on our school sites, and we tip, we in here, and I think with you before, we refer to them as tier one, tier two, and tier three. And so some of our tier one supports, those are the pieces that every student has access to. So IXL English and Math, our academic success classes. Second Step Toolbox Camochis, those are social-emotional curriculums that are used at our elementary school sites. Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports are used district-wide. All of our core curriculum and coursework is tier one, students have access to that. It's our K-5 reading and writing instruction. And then also, you know, that's for our students, but also making sure our staff are getting professional development on supporting students. So this year, we've had Grace Dearborn talk about behavior supports for all students, as well as Dr. Derek Greenfield, working with staff for bias awareness. And then if we think of the next two tiers, there isn't a fine, there isn't a, a direct line between tier two and tier three. It's really student-dependent and what the student needs. But for academic behavior and social-emotional interventions, I just put a couple of examples of some of the pieces that we have available for our students, again, using that data to inform what intervention might be best to support that student. So for academic interventions, that might look like a small reading group or a small math group at an elementary school site. It might include after-school tutoring and/or an alternative education program. For our behavior interventions, we have interventions called check-in, check-out. That's one where we're supporting students, individual students, with behavior, and really building that connection between the student and an adult on campus, as well as we have our behavior intervention and coaching team, as well as opportunity classes. And then for social-emotional interventions, we have interventions such as friendship groups or small groups that might have a very specific focus, and/or students might be recommended or get helps set up with some outside counseling. And then as always, we're thinking, you know, this is a very big system-wide process. So how do we keep, what are, what are our next steps? And so really looking at our tier one practices, we think of tier one, that's what all of our students have access to and are receiving. So really building that foundation. And some of the, the pieces we're looking into are, you know, bringing universal design for learning. So that is, it's not, it's not a curriculum, but it's strategies that teachers can use to engage and motivate students, and provide, provide different ways for students to respond, to engage with the content. For the past couple of years, we've been doing a lot of work with our tier one literacy instruction in the elementary, so continuing on with that, again, building that foundation so that we have that nice and strong. And then we have some secondary math teachers who are interested and who will actually be going to a professional development called Building Thinking Classrooms, where it's all about enhancing math engagement, thinking, and strategies. Another next step is continuing to monitor our foster student achievement and their needs. We have many resources for them, but we know their academics aren't where we would like them. So we want to make sure that we're monitoring and supporting them with the, the tools and resources they need, so that they can be successful with their academics as well. And then always, a long-term, always continuing to refine and support our school sites, our process in the district, as well as using that data and documenting what we're doing to support our students in EduClimber. So, thank you. That's our update for, for this point in the year. And if you have any questions, we're all here to answer and give you, give you our, our thoughts.
How, so Building Thinking Classrooms, is that new this year, or new going into next year? Where is that implementation at?
That's an approach that a number of our math teachers have been pursuing on their own. It's kind of gained popularity in the secondary math world, particularly, I would say, at Chico Junior and Chico High. They got started, it was brought to DLC by some of the folks that were already practicing it, one DLC member in particular. And so we discussed at DLC, and we're sending a representative from each secondary site to a conference in the end of June.
Okay, so it doesn't trickle down to the elementary level?
At this point, no.
Curious, this is not a discussion for here, but about what, what, what math and science is looking like at the elementary level? Come back to that later. But yeah, okay, thank you. Reading and writing is great. I don't think there's any more questions.
Well, thank you so much for allowing us to share some of the updates that we're continuing to put into place and improve upon always at our school sites. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to business services. 9.2.1 is a discussion-action-public hearing, resolution number 1635. resolution number 1635-24, acceptance of the use of state construction grant funding to construct new facilities at Pleasant Valley High School.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for your time this evening. We actually have two resolutions and two public hearings this evening, back-to-back, and they are related to an item that I brought forward last month regarding new construction pupil grants for the construction project we did at Pleasant Valley High School for the new multipurpose room and the two culinary arts and hospitality classrooms that are on the backside of that new building at Pleasant Valley High School. So we are pursuing state funding in order to leverage our Measure K dollars that we're spending on these projects as we work through our master plan. The first resolution in front of you this evening is for the cafeteria multipurpose room in that building. And it is a formality. The State Office of Public School Construction requires that the board review and approve a resolution saying that you will utilize K through six pupil grants that are available under new construction eligibility for use at the high school level. The first one is for 19 existing K6 grade-level classrooms, loading them at six pupils beyond the state loading standard. The state loading standard is 25, and grades four, five, and six are 30, 235 already. So this is a, a formality in order to satisfy the Office of Public School Construction for our application for funding. Are there any questions?
I don't see any questions for clarification. Seeing, seeing no technical questions, I'll open the hearing. Do we have public comment on this resolution? Let's see, no public comment. I will close the hearing. And with that, do we have a motion?
Madam President, I move approval of resolution number 1635-24.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Robinson and a second by Mr. Lando. Any further discussion, Board? I'm seeing none. We will do a, a voice vote. You will notice that a member did step out. And so we will have to do a voice vote as long as she's not present. And it'll just be a, a vote with one, one no vote. So with that, we'll start just with you, Mr. Tennis.
Can we put the vote off until the end, or does it have to happen now, according to the rules?
I don't, I don't know that it's going to be a short, a brief exit. I don't know how long she's going to be, if she, yeah. Yeah, I think we're okay. But thank you for the consideration.
Sure. Tennis, aye.
Okay. Dolby, aye?
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All right, it's four, four yeses, no nos, and one not present. Also, she just said go ahead without her. So, but thanks for that. And then we'll move on to the next, the next item, next resolution, please.
Thank you. So very similar to the resolution that you just approved. And this one is for the additional classrooms that are in the same newly constructed building at Pleasant Valley High School for the Culinary Arts and Hospitality Program. And again, it is requesting the use of the pupil grants at the K through six level to be utilized towards the high school construction. Again, it's five existing K6 grade-level classrooms with six pupils beyond the state loading standard of, of 25 students per classroom, which we already are doing. So do you have any questions about this resolution?
All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. The hearing is open. Do we have public comment on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the hearing. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move adoption of resolution 163624.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. T, Mr. Lando and a second by Ms. Robinson. I will start our voice vote with myself this time. Dolby, aye?
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Tennis, aye.
All right, moving right along. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It passes four yeses, zero nos, and one absent. Moving right along, we are on 9.2.3, Discussion Action Resolution 1633-24, inter-fund borrowing between funds.
Good evening, Board. Every year, we bring a resolution to that involves our possibility of being able to inter-fund borrow. So as a school district, we have two different programs, the Nutrition Services Program and the California State Preschool Program that operate outside of our general fund. So this resolution just gives us the capability to potentially borrow between funds should the need arise. Per ed code, we are required to maintain positive cash balances as of the third Monday in April through the end of the year. We haven't needed to use this, but it's really just there as a precautionary measure, just in case. Okay. Simple as that.
Quick. Told you we didn't know. Okay, so seeing no technical questions, and it's not a hearing this time, so no further public comment. We can move on to a motion.
Did you say you're accepting a motion?
Yes.
I'm, I'm so moved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tennis and a second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion, Board? Fantastic. We'll start with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Tennis, aye.
I'm an abstain.
Perfect. Dolby, aye. So it's four, zero, with one abstain, since we just got our fifth board member back in the room. Fantastic. Let's move right along. Thank you so much. 9.3.1, Discussion Action Resolution Number 1634-24, elimination of classified staff due to lack of work for lack of funds. Is that the right one?
No.
Did I skip one?
Yeah, second interim budget.
Was trying to move us along.
Yeah.
Just kidding. Okay, budget, go. I'm like, you're still up there. I don't think I'm in the right spot.
Yeah.
My bad.
I'm not talking about layoffs. Okay, good evening, Board. Tonight, Jaclyn, Sharice, and I are going to present to you second interim budget. So the major themes tonight, funded average daily attendance utilizing current year data, concentration dollars via local control funding formula, federal and state grant funding, and a multi-year projection including a decrease in COLA. All right, so this slide shows our actual versus funded average daily attendance using the averaging methodology. You guys are really familiar with this slide at this point. Oh, gosh, it's a little funky. So can you see it on your, your screens better? Yeah, okay. So anyway, I, one thing I wanted to point out is at first interim, our estimates for 2324 were 12,276 enrollment and 11,515 ADA. Using the actual P1 data, we ended up a little better than that at 2,316 enrollment and 11,577 ADA. And that puts our attendance percentage at 94%, which is up from our estimate of 93.8. So that's good news. And we'll talk about financial implications of that later in the presentation. Okay, unduplicated pupil percentage. And this is the percentage of students who are either free reduced meal eligible, foster homeless, or English learners. This is how the district receives concentration dollars. So the district needs to hit 55% in a three-year average in order to be eligible for these dollars. If you look at the fiscal year history under three-year average, you can see we didn't hit this until 2223. And if you look to the column on the left of that, you can see we hit the peak percentage in 2122, but we've continued to decline. So if we continue at, to be below 55%, we will no longer receive concentration dollars. And we'll talk about fiscal implications of that as well later. Okay, this slide is just a snapshot of funding from our major grants right now. Some years ago, most categorical programs got eliminated in favor of local control funding formula. So now we're trying, we're seeing more and more grants creep back in, which is good news for the district. About halfway down, you see the COVID relief funding. That is expiring September 30th of this year. So a lot of these other grants we're using to keep the supports in place that we had after COVID. Okay, major assumptions. LCFF revenues based on the COLA of 8.22%. 8.22% is a really high COLA. We do not expect to see that in future years. Funded ADA, again, based on current year actual data of 11,57675. And then the unduplicated three-year average is 56.87%, so 1.87% over that 55% cutoff. And salaries and benefits reflect position control as of February 1st. Right? I'll turn it over to Sharice.
A question. The average daily attendance, that's our current year, is 11,576.
Yes.
What is that number? That is a dollar amount, or that is the number of?
It's a quantity. So.
Students?
Quantity.
That's the number of students.
It is the number of students who attend every single day on average. So our enrollment is 12,000 plus, but not every student attends every single day. So this is roughly 94% of that value.
It's kind of who's there on a given day.
Bingo.
Yeah.
Yeah, is it just, it's confusing because of the comma? Yeah.
Okay. So this is a comparison of the budget that we brought to you in December, otherwise known as first interim, and the budget we're presenting tonight. This is our un, or our unrestricted general fund comparison. And this is a summary of all the different categories. So I'm going to go into the details of what the differences are between when we spoke with you guys last time. Okay, so this is all of our revenues from the unrestricted general fund side. You can see that there was a change, as Marie mentioned. Our average daily attendance went up since the last time we presented. That was the biggest swing. So that gave us about $400,000 more, which is fantastic. And then state revenues increased due to unrestricted lottery at a higher ADA because of that ADA change as well. And then we actually got a lot more interest, a little over a million dollars more than, or were anticipating getting a little more than a million dollars more than what we presented to you at first interim. As everyone's seen, interest rates are increasing, so that's helping us a lot right now. And then we also received a one-time E-rate payment from, from reimbursements that IT files for. Okay, so this is a chart. Yeah, sorry, guys, all of our formats are a little funky tonight, but this is the basic information. So as you can see on the unrestricted side, our local control funding formula, that orange part of the pie came in at about 94%. So that average daily attendance, our unduplicated count, that's what drives that. And that is, as you can see, the majority of our unrestricted general fund dollars. Okay, so this is a comparison of the expenditures that we brought to you at first interim and where we're anticipating landing now. So the, the big differences, we're on the certificated side, lower sick time. The last few years, we've seen an increase in sick time due to COVID and, you know, just people taking better precautions and staying home more when they're sick. But that seems to be changing this year. So it actually dropped from when we did our last budget, as well as unfilled vacancies. So we are trying to, we're working very closely with Ed Services to just discuss what positions we're going to refill so that we can make sure that we're getting our budgets as tight as possible. And then we also had a little bit of an increase on the books and supplies part. And that was due to warehouse vehicle. We had, had to replace one. And then as well as IT equipment. Okay, and then this is just a pie chart that breaks down the unrestricted expenditures as well as our special ed contribution. So all of the green pie slices add up to about 88% of our general fund unrestricted budget on the expenditure side. Then this one discusses our transfers in from other funds. So we get redevelopment agency funds that help to fund our routine restricted maintenance, or otherwise known as our maintenance and operations department. We're anticipating that being about 3.7 million this year. And then the developer fee admin support, that's 3% of the total fee, or the total revenue we collect as a part of our developer fees. And then the contributions to restricted programs, our special ed contribution went down from the first time, from when we presented to you guys in December. That's due to a couple of different changes. We received more revenue from the state and federal dollars due to our ADA increase. So that's fantastic. Helps to fund our special ed program a little bit more. And then same thing as I was discussing on the filling vacancies in the other slide. So we're working very closely with our special ed department as well, just so that we have the best information possible for you in the budget.
All righty, I'm going to pass over to Jaclyn.
So this time of the year, while it's important to look at the current year budget to make sure we're on track, it's really, really important to start looking out, looking out at next year and even the year after that. So that's why we bring forward to you our multi-year projection. So I'm just going to hit a couple of the key assumptions here. Our enrollment, when we look at the cohorts matriculating through, it looks relatively flat on 12,000. Couple increase next year and, and the following, or a couple decreased, increase next year and a couple decreases the following year. The big piece here that I want to point out is right now, the Department of Finance has the COLA projection at .76% for next year, which is significantly lower than when we were here in December, around 2% or 3%. Right now, the following year, in '25, '26, it's, it's slated to be 2.73. I don't think it's going to be that much, honestly, given the economic situation with our state and the greater economy. So we'll play that by year, and we'll get those calculations from the Department of Finance as we move on. We'll plan accordingly to know that if we get full funding at 2.73, what one budget looks like, and then if it is a lesser amount, we can certainly adjust. Yes?
Thank you. Will the May revise give us any indication as to whether or not that 2.73 is even remotely possible?
Probably not in May. They use eight data points in order to determine COLA. So it's usually four from the current year and four from the prior year. So we won't have that data quite yet for '25, '26. We are still implementing our transitional kindergarten program, so we are looking at one additional class for next year. So we have that in there. As we've talked about with the concentration dollars, last year, we received a little bit. This year, we received a significant amount of concentration dollars. So we use some of those dollars for professional development, knowing that we're not going to be in a position to receive concentration dollars next year. Those dollars related to professional development have been backed out. One other major change are retirements. Typically, we estimate about 20 certificated retirements every year. That's been really consistent for many, many years. Unfortunately, this year, we are not seeing that at this point in time. So from a budgetary perspective, I reduced that in our projections. So these are the numbers behind that multi-year projection. So we have the current year, we have the projected for '24, '25, as well as the projection for '25, '26. So I understand there's a lot of numbers on the slide, but if, the most important is if you look at line four, it says net increase or decrease, if it's in parentheses, in fund balance. You'll notice that all three of those values are in red and they are, have parentheses around them. So we are spending more money than we are bringing in. So we have reserves. Reserves are like a savings account. You can dip into them once, but you can't dip into them ongoing. So when we fast forward to next year, and we're looking at about a $2.7 million deficit, now is really the time to start those conversations. And we have been having conversations with Ed And we have been having conversations with Ed Services, um, and certainly HR, about what can we do to tighten our belt to make sure that we're living within our means? And so, um, that's looking at all aspects of the budget, um, both people and materials and supplies and services. Um, and you'll see it just compounds as we go out further into that third year. So for every dollar we can save now, that's $2 the following year and $3, um, the third year. So just really important, um, aspects there. So one thing that we are seeing, um, are the STIRS and PERS increases? Or should I say PERS increases? So at this point in time, STIRS has not increased the employer contribution. So what this means is for every dollar that a STIRS member earns, the district kicks in 19.1 cents, if you will, into their pension. And for PERS, for every dollar, um, that a PERS employee earns in the current year, maybe 26.68 cents, um, towards their pension, um, as an employer cost. And so the PERS rate on the very, very bottom line of this slide, you can see, is continuing to increase. Right now, the STIRS rate is projected to stay flat, um, but the STIRS board has the ability to, um, as they look at their actuarial reports of their investments, increase or potentially decrease that percentage. So as Sharice alluded to earlier, we are seeing higher interest rates at the county treasury, um, because of our large cash balance. And I will say, I am not afraid to have a large cash balance. Um, cash is king, cash is what pays our bills. So while we may have a reserve that's high, we don't always have cash. Um, so it's important to keep cash in the bank. Um, one of the mechanisms that the state legislature, um, and the governor have, um, in their back pocket is to do what's called cash deferrals, um, which is essentially, um, checks in the mail. So they'll take the money that they owe us, for example, in May and June, and pay us in August and September. Um, we still have staff to pay, and we still have bills to pay. So it's important that we have cash in the bank to be able to do that and essentially float the money until we get our money from the state. So it's a mechanism the states use in the past, and I would not be surprised if they use that in the future as a mechanism for, um, budget reductions. So we have to self-certify. You guys hear this three times a year, have to self-certify. Positive, we'll meet our obligations qualitative, we might not quali- qualified, we may not meet our obligations, and negative, we will not. So I am very happy to say with myself and my team that we, um, are here presenting a positive budget for second interim. We can make all of our obligations in the current year, as well as the two future years. So where does that lead us? So next steps, um, we are actively reviewing our enrollment for next year, because we're looking at staffing, um, to really dial in how many teachers we need, how many support staff we need, um, to really tighten that budget, tighten that belt a little bit as we move forward. Uh, we're continuing to participate in meetings with Ed Services related to, as we alluded to earlier, feedback, um, from our LCAP meetings to figure out what those priorities are, um, moving forward into '24, '25. Um, and I think from, from my perspective, um, waiting for the governor's budget will be very interesting to see how budget negotiations occur at the state level over the next couple of months, to see, um, what is being proposed as, as funding or not, um, going into next year. And then we'll be back in June, um, in collaboration and correlation with the LCAP, um, to provide a budget for the next school year. And that's all we have for you, unless you have additional questions this evening.
All right, seeing no questions, um, we also have no public comment signed up for this item, so we will roll right into, uh, a motion.
Uh, I move that we accept this financial report.
Second.
Right, we have a motion by Mr. Tennis and a second by Mr. Lando to accept the second interim budget. Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Conga, aye.
Dolby, aye. Thank you for that update. Um, we'll move on to human resources. 9.3.1 is a discussion action item for resolution number 1634-24, the elimination of classified staff due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually going to introduce, uh, invite to the podium Executive Director of Classified Human Resources, Mike Allen, to introduce this, uh, item.
Good evening, Board. So unfortunately, we're here in this budget time of, you know, um, tight budgets. And, um, normally, we bring, uh, our resolutions or our, our items, and these positions are usually not filled with people. But unfortunately, this time, we have, um, 12, 12, uh, positions, and six of them are filled with people. Um, I've met with these folks, very fine folks, very nice employees. They've done nothing wrong, but unfortunately, um, just in the situation we're in, we're looking at, at reductions. And so, um, I'm bringing forth this resolution, um, to eliminate classified staff due to lack of work or funds. We've worked with, um, you know, the union, worked with the district. We really try to do this, um, through attrition and, um, with, with not filling positions, but at this point, we're at a point, um, where, um, we're bringing six positions to you that are filled with people.
Um, so, oh, did you want to, did you have something else? I, I had a-
Absolutely.
Technical question. Um, what's the, um, FTE, um, total for the positions being eliminated?
Oh, that is a great question. Um, I did not do the math on that. I do believe it, ch-ch-ch-ch, I'd have to do some quick math here. Um, I just didn't have the, the total with me.
Right around seven.
Two, three. Yeah, about seven and a half, eight, I do believe FTE.
And next question. Um, are, uh, you said six positions were vacant and six were not made yet?
Yes.
Are the behavior specialist's positions both vacant?
They are not vacant.
The instructional paraprofessional position?
That is vacant.
That is vacant, so the others are part of the IA computers.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I will say, um, so the process that goes with this is that, um, they have rights and they have what we call Tucker rights. And with those rights, they, um, go on what we call a reemployment list. And that reemployment list lasts for 39 months. If they were to take a, uh, voluntary demotion or take another, uh, another position, which, um, we will offer them, when they're on the list, they will be offered, um, positions that they are qualified in order, and they are, they get preferential, um, treatment for the, before the people from outside. And so, um, with that, um, they will be offered other employment, um, with the district, and that would increase their time on the reemployment list to 64, um, months. Yeah, 64 months. And with that, if a job comes open, if, uh, IA computers or behavior specialist's position comes open, they are the first ones to, um, receive that, that position back. Um, again, fine people, nice, um, and it's just very unfortunate.
Um, Mr. Allen, thank you. On, uh, the case of a, an employee who has not previously served in a lower position,
Yeah.
Um, they would have the opportunity to file for unemployment while they're-
Absolutely. And actually, we will give them a letter to, um, the EDD office stating that they held this position for so much time and that they, um, were, you know, let go due to layoffs, due to lack of funds or lack of work. Um, we'll give them that letter. We'll also give them a letter, um, to future employees saying that, you know, explaining the, the, the layoff process and that they have, they were in good standing at, at the point, um, when they were employed with us. Um, so we'll give those, that to them and, um, help them in any way that we can, um, move forward with future employment.
I had my mic on for a second for too long, and then I forgot I turned it off. Um, with the behavior specialists, are there, are there other behavior interventionist positions in the district, or are those, are, are those, are there more?
There's only two in the district.
Okay.
Um, so, um, this is a whole classification that is, is being eliminated.
Mm-hmm. But are there other, are there other positions or other staff that are providing behavior, um-
Yes.
Support?
Yes, so we do. We, we have, um, we have what we call intensive behavior interventionists, it's what we call IBIs, and they do, um, provide behavior support.
Okay. Uh, are those, how, are there like, is there one on each site or?
There is one on each site. Um, that is the goal. There are one on each site, and they would go inside the classrooms and, and support, um, teachers and students, um, in terms of collecting data, helping them, um, helping them manage some behaviors in the classroom and giving them the support they need, and also helping the, um, instructional paraprofessionals, actually helping them gain skills.
Okay. How are those positions different from the behavior specialist position that are on this list?
That's a, that's a great question. Um, well, I, I know Dr. Schala could probably explain this a little bit better than I can. Um, so the behavior specialists, they, um, they go into the classroom and they do, do kind of the same thing. They, they can, um, they can collect data, they help, um, teachers with, you know, behaviors, um, finding the, the cause of the behavior and asceticity, things like that. But then, um, the behavior specialists, um, they can also write behavior plans. Um, technically, I, I don't think ours can right now, because they're, they're not quite certified. Um, so they can't, um, write behavior plans, but that would be a, a function of the behavior specialist that, that IB would not be able to do.
Gotcha. And so, sorry. Um, so there, but there are other staff, like certificated teachers, that can also write behavior plans, right?
Um, our school psychologists can, can write behavior-
And so they would work together with-
And they do. They, they currently do also.
And these are our only two behavior specialists in the whole district?
That's correct.
Is there, um, can you just give up like a brief, maybe just explanation? Maybe this might be more for Ms. Schala, but, um, about how it came to be that it was determined that those, those, those positions, we could kind of dissolve and rely more on our behi- or the behavior interventionists that the other-
The IBIs and, and their sites.
It's kind of confusing and so for, just for people out there, I, this is something that I learned better today. I kind of had to grasp this myself, so I'm just kind of asking this so that anybody who's listening in or has this concern, we can kind of better explain these two positions versus what is still going to be happening in our, on our school sites.
All right, so, um, my, my understanding, and, and Ms. Schala could, um-
Jump in anytime.
Yeah, she can totally. It, is that it's just, it's kind of a redundancy. So, um, the behaviorists, the behavior specialists are itinerant, and they go everywhere, within our new system, with IBIs, uh, out at every site. It becomes kind of a redundancy that.
Yeah, it's exactly what Mr. Allen was saying. So, um, when districts bring in behavioral specialists or BCBA's, that's the, the licensure that they fall under. What we're hoping is to alleviate some of the pressure from school psychologists in doing functional behavioral assessments. So all of our psychologists are trained in doing those, and that is the precursor assessment piece that's required when we're writing behavior intervention plans for really intense, difficult behaviors that we're having a hard time, um, changing over time. So the school psych, in order to assist the school psychologists, there are behavioral specialists that can come in and work alongside that team to conduct the FBA or the functional behavioral assessment, get that piece going, support the team in, in, in putting a behavior intervention in place, a behavior intervention plan in place, and then moving forward. So, given that they have kind of that specialty, their assistance in coming in helps that process flow fast, because that's all that they do, and psychologists kind of have multiple responsibilities off campuses. So it is a little bit of a redundant piece in that nature.
So I guess, could, could we expect this, an impact to be seen for, from this? Or are our psychologists and other staff going to be able to just kind of maintain, uh, current practices and, and hopefully, we won't see any hiccups in, in developing those behavior plans?
I don't anticipate that we'll see any additional hiccups. Currently, our, our psychologists do functional behavioral assessments. Um, we had kind of sized up with adding these positions when we were creating our behavior intervention and coaching team. And so, you know, just trying to figure out and creating that big team and what that was going to look like district-wide, now trying to determine, um, what's a need and the functional behavioral assessments are a requirement that psychologists are already doing. So identifying this work as redundant is kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks for being here, Mike.
Thank you.
We do have public comment on this side?
Fantastic. All right, so then I will invite up public comment. I don't have a, a name listed in front of me. While you're walking up here, I'll give you the little spiel. Yeah, you get three minutes to speak. Um, you'll see a timer on the board. Um, you'll hear a sound when there's 30 seconds left of your time. Um, you're here to address the board. It's nice to know your name and, you know, what, who or what you represent. Not required, but, um, yeah, please feel free to, to address the board.
My name is Cassie Camajez, and I am here to talk about the behavioral specialists. I'm going to try and take emotions out of it, because they have saved my son's school future. So, sorry. The behavioral specialists are so different from anybody else that works within our classrooms. My son is in a mod severe program. He's non-verbal and aggressive, um, can be aggressive, I should say. Um, earlier this year, they had talked about sending him to Point Quest because of his behaviors, which I'm not sure if you guys know. Okay, we're spending a ton of money sending kids to Point Quest. Um, there's been multiple kids in his classroom that were talked about being sent. The behavioral specialist came and stepped in. They made behavioral plans for these kids. They trained the staff, they trained the teachers, and our, my son is doing amazing. He's having no issues, and it's all due to the behavioral specialist. And there's many cases out there where this is happening. Um, they, again, are training the IBIs. The IBIs don't replace the behavioral specialists. We have an IB in our classroom, and the behavioral specialist trained the IB. He did not come up with any of the behavioral plan, which, by the way, is also written into his IEP. His behavioral plan and his behavioral specialist hours are written into his IEP. So what would happen? You're just going to go against the IEPs and take out all the behavioral. Um, our school psychs do not do behavioral plans. I have been with Chico Unified, my son is in sixth grade, and the behavioral specialist is the first one to ever build a behavioral plan. And they just, we need them. They're so important. Um, I just can't stress this enough. They've actually saved you guys so much money from not sending kids out to Point Quest because of the work they've done. So when you're thinking about your budget, think about the money they're saving. We have two of them. They are amazing. They are working so hard in all these different classrooms. Um, the classroom my son's in right now hasn't had a teacher all year. He is in a mod severe classroom that has had subs up until about three months ago. And they stepped in and just totally took over, trained staff. They're just so important, so needed. And I just urge you guys to think about that and think about the kids that they have saved from being sent to Pink, Point Quest, building these behavioral plans. So sorry for my emotions, but this is so important. You took a kid from eloping off campus every day and having self-injury every day to thriving because of them. So please, just please.
Hello? She's going to make me cry. Um, my name is Julia Rogoff. I also have a mild, a mod severe student here in this district who has benefited from behavioral specialists. And I want you to completely understand that a behavioral specialist and the licensing, um, that they hold BCBA, IBIs, that's a high school diploma. Do you honestly, is the district honestly telling me that a high school diploma can do what a BCBA is doing? That has spent four, six years in college, learning? School psychologists, when you talk about them- School psychologists, when you talk about them, they don't have the first, they even know very little about creating behavior plans. They have a large, um, information about a lot of different topics. But when we're talking about behavior, BCBA's are the experts. Like she said, if you want to talk about what these people do, BCBA's have taken my child from banging her head on the floor, making herself bleed, getting concussions, to now thriving in school. This is not a high school diploma position. This is not something you can just switch out for somebody who doesn't know what they're doing. These are vital positions that are saving students' lives. It's not just we're gonna save money, which we will by not sending students off campus because you don't have the support. You don't have the people in place here in this district to support violent behaviors. And that's what you have. Let's not mince words. Our students can be violent. They can be violent with themselves. They can be violent with other students and other teachers. And who saves us? Behavioral specialists. It's not high school graduate IBIs who don't know what they're doing. It's not school psychologists who sit behind a desk. It's the people in the trenches who are with our students and know what they're doing and know how to mitigate behavior and know how to help our students who are trained in autism, who are trained in non-verbal communication. That's what you need. And once again, you're taking the two that support your most severe students, the only two that you have, out of all the people in this district that you could lay off, you take ours? What does that say? How many other positions are there that there are hundreds of, that there's twenty, that there's thirty? But you take our two that supports students with the most severe behaviors. I, I, I cannot understand how you possibly came up with this list. It's not redundant. IBIs cannot do what behavior specialists do, and neither can school psychologists. And if you took a moment to see their licensing, you see the training that they needed to go through, you see what they had to learn to graduate with these degrees, you could not compare that to what an IB does. For my student, for every mod severe student here in this district, we need to keep those. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Could you kind of explain the relationship between, um, these, uh, behavior specialists and people going off-site or to another location? Uh, is there something unique in them making that decision to send somebody away? Would we not be able to do that? Is that resource not there? And then my second question is, are they actually in, uh, you, to use your words, in the trenches? Are they, they, they're consistently, you know, day after day with the student? Um, or are they, I, I got the impression they were kind of in a decision-making role relative to the, uh, a consulting role, but not necessarily right there day in and day out. Go ahead.
So I'm gonna ask Jen, uh, Schala, to come up and address that. And I'm also gonna ask Jen to talk about, uh, the requirements to be a behaviorist as well as how long we've had these positions in place.
So these positions are new to the district. Um, we've had them for, um, one for not even a year yet. We're just this, this school year is the first year for that position. The second one we brought in about this time last year. So relatively new positions for our district. And so when we talk about, um, I'm sorry, can you ask me a question again?
First one was, what's the real, the relationship between the behavioral specialists and, and a student going to another treatment option? Like, um, Point, uh, the name of the school?
Point Quest?
Yes.
Okay. So we had a really challenging situation in the fall. We lost a teacher right away with a, a special, or sorry, an extensive support needs class with our students who have our most intensive needs. And so we scrambled and rather than looking at sending students outside of the district to, um, non-public agency schools, um, we pulled together our, our finest team that we could. So I had a project specialist, Morgan Dar, who I pulled her out of that work, and she was assigned to that classroom. So she was in there all day, every day. We had, um, instructional paraprofessionals. We had both behaviorists in the classroom working with that student under Morgan's direction, ensuring that all of the plans and supports were being provided to meet the needs of those students. Still, in November, we were having staff being hurt. So the decision was made at that point, we had more than given it a lot of time and effort and support to keep students on campus in our communities. The decision was made that we needed to move forward with a couple of students who needed more intensive care and see if that made a difference in keeping kids safe and healthy in the classroom. So that decision was made, um, for one student, and it has essentially calmed down the rest of the three.
So in that one scenario, um, that decision could have been made without behavior specialists also to send a student away.
Correct.
Um, and so for a certain period of time prior to that decision being made, which, which in that, in that case, sounds like it was a, it was a solution that people were happy with.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you said for a number of weeks you had both behavior specialists in that one situation?
Correct. And we had them there for, sorry to interrupt, Matt. We had them there for the entire semester.
So one semester, both behavior specialists.
Mm-hmm.
Were in with the one student.
Correct.
And then there were other staff with that one student also.
So we had four students, and we had six to seven staff at all time in order to ensure that, that students were safe and supported, and that when students needed additional help, there was a backup staff to ensure that breaks could be taken, that if, if a student needed to go somewhere, that two adults were doing that, um, just given the level of need of those students.
Which semester was this?
Fall semester this year.
Thank you.
But the solution that made more people happy was going off-site ultimately.
Oh, it's not about making anybody happy. It's about making decisions about, are we starting to see progress in goals? Are we seeing student improvement in behavior and safety? Um, and those things were not happening.
By happy, I meant work, uh, achieving our goals. It was more effective in achieving our goals.
I would say it was more effective in meeting the needs of the child because we were not, even though we had put together the best that we could possibly put together on a, on a comprehensive campus like that, we were not able to keep the, to keep that one particular student safe on a regular basis. And it was causing difficulty for the other three.
So I guess it doesn't seem to me like there was a unique role that the behavior specialists played, um, ultimately.
They're highly skilled, and they do have additional training. And they were using those skills to support this classroom. Um, that, there is no doubt about that. But using their behaviorist position, no, they were not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There was, um, a lot of comments about, um, the high school degree and things. What additional, um, training do the, I'm gonna say it wrong, IPSY?
IBIs.
IBIs get in addition to their high school diploma?
So in addition to meeting, um, I'm gonna call it wrong because my brain wants to go NCLB, and I know that's not true. What is the requirement, the minimum requirement competency? Okay, in order to meet, they have to meet the competency exam, so it is more than just a high school diploma. In order to progress to an IB role, um, there is experience that's required, years of experience working with students with disabilities. And part of the program is that Gina Payton meets with our IB staff every single week, and they do two hours of training with them every week. And so it is a much more intensive role. They're learning all of the concepts of supporting behavior. They're learning how to collect data for data management of behavior plans. They're learning how to consult and collaborate with other team members. So that's what's occurring for our IB staff. The, the behaviorist training does have a college degree, and so, um, school districts don't have a credential for a behavioralist, and most frequently, um, districts hire behavioralists through outside contracts as non-public agencies most often. And it's because they have a license called a board-certified behavioral analyst or BCBA license. In order to practice fully under that license, you have to have all of the college credits completed. You have to have the hours of supervision and all of those pieces completed. So our folks didn't, didn't have all of that completed. So that's how they were hired, um, as district employees.
I'm gonna jump in here and ask a question because I don't know. Um, it might be a question for Mike. But do we have a mechanism in place on our classified side that would allow behaviors to get a special ed credential to go back to school?
We do. Um, so, um, we have a few programs that, one goes through Chico State. I think there's four programs that allow, um, um, classified staff to go back and become specialized teachers or teachers. So yes, we do. It's on our website.
So I just want to clarify, um, do the people currently in these positions have the full BCBA certification?
No, they don't. And so we actually contract out with a BCBA who supports them yearly. Um, they meet regularly with her, and she supports them through any of the aspects that they're still working through.
And do we have a mechanism in place, Mr. Allen or Ms. Bailey, for them to, uh, to help them get that certification? Should they desire to do so?
I'm not sure on that exact, uh, certification. Um, I know we have it to teaching, but I'm, I'm not sure about the BCBA.
Yeah, because BCBA doesn't have a credential in the state of California. There's not a specific credential for them for that. So that's why there's that outside license.
But if we had someone in-house who had that license, we would not need to contract out for that.
We don't have anybody in-house who has a BCBA finished license.
I hear that. Yes.
Oh, I had a question. Are the, um, behavior specialists currently the ones who are, um, providing the training for the IBIs? Are they the ones who are leading the workshops? What, you said two hours every?
Week.
Week. Okay. Are they the ones who are providing that role?
No, they, they don't. So they may, um, step in and help from time to time, but the training comes from Gina Payton. And so Gina creates, um, some weeks there are online modules that she monitors that they've completed the online work that's required. Other times, it's direct instruction with her.
Sorry, can you clarify for everybody who, who Gina Payton is?
Sorry. Gina Behaton is one of our special education coordinators who, um, coordinates all of the behavior and intervention coaching model.
Um, there was a very important question that was raised by one of our speakers. Will, um, removing these positions, uh, put us in danger of violating IEPs?
No, because this, the way that we have our IEPs written, we don't have them specified that a BCBA is the person providing that service. And the way it's written, we can't have any member on the IEP team providing that support service. So it does, it wouldn't violate an IEP to change a provider in this case.
Can you clarify just a little bit better for me the timeline again of these two positions? The, the first be, uh, behavioral specialist, that's not a true BCBA.
Correct.
Um, was hired about this time last year, so they've been with us for about a year.
About a year.
And then the second one was hired after that, at the beginning of the school year, towards the end of last school year. I mean, less than a year ago, but.
Yes. So they were hired during the summer, started, um, at the start of this school year, so start of twenty-three, twenty-four.
And then, so March, April, May, June. So the first one was in the classroom or was in and out of classrooms doing their role for those first two and a half months of their, their position.
Yes.
Um, I'm not gonna account for summertime, but I'd imagine that they were doing something in the summertime. Um, and then in the fall, they both were in one classroom, doing very important work. I'm not gonna discount that whatsoever. Okay. That's, that's helping me in my timeline. Now, if we didn't have those two people, um, in those positions in the last year and less than year, um, where there was a need for that skill set, would we just be contracting out with a BCBA um, through, uh, through a third party, uh, or other organization, kind of like what you mentioned?
It depends. Um, part of hiring them was part of an initiative to really expand behavioral intervention and coaching. And so it was part of that BIC team that Gina put to get, Gina Payton put together for us and explained. The intention of this is for teams to come together and support teachers, coach alongside teachers, and support staff on how to effectively support behavior that occurs in the classroom. And so that was the original intention of that. The orig, the first behavioralist that was hired was brought in kind of at that ground level of creating what would this support system look like for the district? And so she and Gina were working very closely in creating that process in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. And then we started this school year with all of the intention to run that process and that program as Gina had defined it, and unfortunately found ourselves in a situation where we had a classroom with our, our students with the most amount of need. And that was what we did to try to support behavior and make change that was necessary to keep those students safe and on a comprehensive campus.
Um, I don't know, this question is a little uncomfortable to ask for me, but, um, because it's March thirteenth, right? And March fifteenth is the deadline that we are legally allowed to do layoffs and pass that. We can't do that type of thing. Um, so should the board move forward with adopting this resolution as is? And, and doing away with those two positions, laying off those, those two people? But then, then this is not gonna happen. But in some idealistic world where the, but, governor comes back and says, never mind, the budget's flush, we're good to go. Our budget's better than what we are anticipating by a long shot. We could hypothetically reinstate those positions, and those two people would be in line to be offered those positions first?
Absolutely.
Okay. Right. Okay. If we, if we could, we could put off this decision if it wasn't for that March fifteenth.
That is correct.
Deadline. That is a, a law. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, sorry. Arlene.
Um, would a motion be in order?
I, I, I have not called for one yet because we still have been asking questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. I'll wait until you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that we did have more public comment, though I do want to keep asking chain questions as well.
Um, I'll, I'll accept public comment.
Um, so my son as well is someone that benefited from the work of a BCBA, behavioral specialist. And when we transitioned to Parkview, it was really a big struggle. And I saw behaviors in him that one we had never seen before. And I had never expected to happen with him. Um, and it was, it was kind of a dangerous situation. Um, I feel, when my kids come to me and they want something that's outside of our budget, I never tell them no. I tell them, let's come up with a plan of how we can be able to afford this. How can we make it work? I understand there's deadlines that we have to meet, and this is probably, I don't know, who knows how long we've been able to discuss it and look at the budget. But I feel a lot of times, that's the approach we need to take that I don't necessarily feel happens. Maybe it's behind-the-scenes stuff that we as a public don't get to have access to, but I feel that's a really important question to ask yourself. How can we make it work? Is it possible for us to make it work? It's never, to me, I'm, I'm of the perspective, it's never a flat one hundred percent no. There's always wiggle room and there's room for flexibility. These behavior specialists do play an important role in our schools. And it's extremely unfortunate that they are gonna be taken away. Yes, there is the opportunity, like you mentioned, for them to come back and to step into those roles if the budget looks great. But what if it doesn't? How can we ask ourselves, how can we make it work? Is it possible, or are we just gonna flat out tell ourselves no? Again, I feel that's a really important question to ask ourselves because it does benefit so many students across our campuses. And the way they implement, my personal experience with our, uh, behavior specialists that we worked with was amazing. She, they even asked me questions that I had never thought of. To like even put in any real thought of my son's behaviors and how things were impacting him. Um, so I mean. So I mean, sorry, just very spur of the moment, but that's it, is how we can ask ourselves, how can we make this work? Thank you.
Justin Kamadz, my wife spoke earlier about our son Mason. So just to add a little color to the classroom that we were talking about, the kind of extreme behaviors. So transitioning from elementary school to middle school is hard for any kid, right? You can imagine for a non-verbal autistic child, another challenge, right? New environment, bigger kids, you're learning. The reason those behavioral specialists were in that class the whole semester is because they didn't have a teacher. They didn't have aides. You've got IEPs with one-to-ones and you have to have people. So it, it wasn't a designed thing, I believe, to say, okay, let's take a specialist and have him here or her here all day, every day. That was a necessity. When you don't have aides and you don't have teachers, it's, it's next person up, right? And I, I heard a lot about redundancies. And I struggle with that one a little bit because it, it's not a redundancy. So to, to clear up what all of these positions are, you know, these behavioral specialists are like your teachers. So your teacher is teaching a student. When that student learns a criteria or learns a skill, you don't tell the student to teach the other students. And on the same side, you don't tell the principal to teach every class. So the behavioral specialists right now, contrary to what we heard, they are the ones teaching the IBIs. They're in the classroom. They're seeing the behaviors. Every child is unique. My son's issues are different than her son's issues or someone else's daughter's issues. And so you have to see that in real time, understand what it looks like, understand what that plan needs to be formulated to make it work. You know, you, you don't call a mechanic and just randomly say, I think this is what I got going on and my car did this here at that time and that. And can you, can you write me up the plan and I'll fix it myself? Right? So if, if the plan is to have the school psychologist who probably didn't go in the classroom or Gina is just going to write up a plan and we're all going to execute it, that's like saying, hey, I'm going to read a Google document and go fix the diesel tomorrow. It's not going to happen. So I, I think we really need to understand the, the specialized role that these two positions play to, to really understand what we're talking about. The other piece, I, I, and this is more of a question, I don't know the systems and processes, but do you, is there a way to break out the, the, the computer support? And that layoff apart from the two specialists or do they all have to be combined together? I guess that's one question. The other one I have is just, you brought up a, a comment about a dollar becomes two dollars becomes three dollars. Are we going to invest in these behavioral specialists to teach aides, teachers, staff and let that compound? Or after one semester and then another two semesters, we're just going to say it's out? So thank you for the time.
Good evening. I actually wasn't going to talk today, but I'm actually one of the behavioral specialists in the district currently. And we work hand-in-hand with school psychologists, with the teachers. The teachers are coming to us with behavior questions, behavior concerns. We are the ones running the interventions. We are coming up with the plans. We do contract with the BCBA. We require a master's degree. We're both master's students. We, one just finished her degree in December. I will be finishing this December and then we sit for the board exam in the spring or summer. We are in the trenches with these kids. We are itinerant, we go around to all the schools. We work with the parents, the psychologists, the speech pathologists, the OTs. We are in it with them. If we're serving our students the correct way, this is something that's a district is dealing with in a serious issue, is behavior. There has to be somewhere else to make an impact. Behavior is a huge impact for this district right now. We are specialized in this, this is what we go to school for. We are, we can write the, the FBA's. We can take the data. We can do all these things and do assessments. So when it comes to time for, for us to sit for the BCBA exam, yes, we will not need to be contracted anymore with a supervisor that oversees our work. But for right now, that's where we're at. Thank you.
I just kind of want to echo what the speakers before me have said. These positions are very important. You can tell from Cassie, who is a friend of ours. And we know her personal struggles that she's helped her son overcome this year. As a result of these two positions being in place. When those positions aren't filled, the classrooms can become very, not just disorganized, but they can become very unsafe. And it's important that we step back and realize these positions are supporting our most vulnerable population in our school district. These are kids that have extensive needs, that, that need these interventions to be able to remain in the school district. By eliminating these positions, even for hypothetically, a temporary period of time until the funding comes in to rehire them, that's still a gap. These kids, my son included, don't do well with transitions. Transitions are a huge trigger. I know that our kids, from the parents that have spoken, even just moving from the library to back to their classroom can be dysregulating. Imagine having finally, just like Cassie and her husband said, finally having the support that their son needs and then pulling the rug out from underneath that. Imagine the impact that it's going to have on those kids in that classroom. Even for a temporary period of time can be extremely dysregulating. And I just urge you to keep that in mind as you make your decision tonight.
Are there any other questions from board members?
I guess I would just echo the gentleman who spoke. Is there options to separate out these, as he mentioned, like the computers versus the behavioral specialist? Is that even an option?
Yeah. Do you have a question?
No, I'm waiting for you to run the flag up the flagpole.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions or public comment, I'll call for a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I move that we strike the behavioral specialist's positions 414034 and 414035 from the resolution 1634-24.
I'll second that. With the, with the assumption that you mean to pass the resolution without those.
Yes, that is exactly my intent.
Okay, so the motion is to pass this resolution minus the two behavioral specialist positions listed on there. That's what's on the floor and off our discussion.
I'll speak to the motion. You know, I've been on the board a while. And one of the most significant issues that we have dealt with over the past number of years is keeping our students and our staff safe while we attempt to move them along and, and broaden their, their skill sets so that they can, you know, be independent in their school contacts. I heard for the first time that we have two positions that are making great headway toward making that happen that don't involve sending our students out of district and expend tremendous amounts of dollars to put them in private, non-public circumstances. So that's why my motion is coming. We have something that's working. I want to find a different way of funding it and not lay those positions off in two days.
All right, thank you. First, I want to acknowledge the work that staff does. There's a question about how do we make these decisions? It is never easy to even have to make these lists about, about where we might make cuts. And we're only even considering this because as we saw in the budget presentation, we need to tighten up everything around our core services. And I hear that. That said, I want to echo what Ms. Robinson said in that we hear every year about both safety in our special education classrooms and about the difficulty of retaining special education teachers. And I am concerned about removing more supports from those and having even more of our teachers choose not to come back in the special education classification. That's hard. We already can't fill those positions and I know people are already looking. I know specialized teachers who are looking elsewhere because they feel like we don't support them enough. I also know that when you guys want places to make cuts, the mantra, the mantra is always make cuts as far away from students as possible. And I just think, I think we missed the mark on that one this time. I don't, I don't know where else we make cuts to make up the money. And the fact that we do need to make cuts and everyone needs to be aware of that. Like speaking just to the public in general, we are entering a time when T U Unified is going to have to pull back on a lot of things to stay solvent and avoid much worse cuts in the future. So we are going to make some hard decisions up here. That said, I, I can't see a way to, to pull these two positions away from the work that they're doing.
I would echo much of what you said. I think with the fact that we have quite a few people who are, are leaving and not wanting to be a part of, or we're having a difficult time retaining some of our special ed staff. And we have two qualified people who want to be there and are excited about what they do. I did hear the mention of the redundancy. So I wonder if there's like a way that we could, and I'm sure they would already, they already believe they're maximized and pushed to their limits. But maybe redefining or considering ways to make it less redundant and maybe have their role be maximized a little bit more. And it sounds like maybe with the opportunity with them graduating, we'll have that within the next year if we end up deciding to keep. But anyway, just maybe addressing that redundancy and, and expanding their role to make sure we were utilizing them to their fullest potential.
I'm going to tail off that because I was thinking similarly that it may not be when the program is reaching more of its fully fledged status that this, that it is redundant. It may just be that this program hasn't even been in place for a full school year. And we haven't been able to even see the potential that, that just having two behavioral specialists in district, you know, building rapport with staffs and students will pay off, I think, more than what we've even been able to see, just what we've heard from tonight. And really, just to keep it short, it goes back to the concept of our district standing for every student every day. And if we get rid of these positions that have made a significant impact even just on one student, and it's been more than one, but even if it was just one, then what are we, what are we standing for? If we're not, if we're not standing for our own, our own slogans?
Well, the all, you know, you could be standing for the all, not just the one.
Is that it, throwback to two years ago?
May I speak?
Yep, please.
So I'm going to take a dissenting view. I have spoken to staff and I know that, that they're not indifferent to the needs of that student that we're talking about or any of those kids that we're talking about. These guys are not like cold calculating mathematicians who just sit around, you know, looking for the juiciest piece of, you know, low hanging fruit that they can snip off of some branch somewhere. I mean, I, I don't know their whole life story, but, but they're not that. You know, they've committed their lives to education in the way that, you know, we, we all have on some small level and that we pick a vocation because we, we like it and we want to do that. And I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank you guys for the difficult decisions that you make day in and day out, you know? We are facing tough economic times and we're at the like tip of the iceberg of it. So be happy that this vote is going to go your way. Because it, it sounds to me like a time's coming when, when votes are maybe going to not go people's way because we'll be in, in a more necessary position. But I want to ask a bizarre question. I heard that if, if school boards can't figure out how to cut the budget, that the state or somebody just sends somebody here and that person just sits there with you and they just cut the budget for you. So really, that's kind of pretty lame, I think, and cowardly system. Because it enables us to just sit up here and say, you know, oh, you're so valuable in that situation. It's all so valuable. And every single person, a staff tries to like send up, you know, proposed cuts to a budget, it's got to get cut. We could always have the comfort, you know, to just sit up here and say, well, I just can't, I can't possibly cut that, that incredibly valuable thing, you know? And we can look good and feel good. And then we can complain three years from now if some auditor-type person is sitting up here with us saying, well, you got to do this, 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 and this because otherwise your books aren't going to balance. And we can just say, that's just, that's just, you know, a totally terrible injustice that they're, that they're making us do that, you know? And then I, I guess somebody could go to sleep at night feeling like they had always stood up for people who deserved, you know, that service. And it wasn't their fault that it got cut. You know? That, that seems to be the world that we're living in. And I think that exact thing has happened here. And that's why Kevin Boltima, your predecessor, actually came to work for Chico Unified School District as he was that person who was here, you know, making those difficult decisions. Because nobody else, you know, had the guts basically to do it, you know? So why should I stick my neck out now for staff who've just kind of identified what they thought was a, a responsible decision to, to make that would bring our books into balance over the next few years?
So, or it could be that no one's being a coward and instead we have a principal disagreement. For instance, a lot of people have spoken about the fact that when special ed goes awry, it costs us a lot of money, shipping students to NPSs, lawsuits and hearings regarding broken IEPs.
But haven't they thought of that? Haven't they thought through those scenarios?
I'm sure they have. I'm sure they have.
I won't belabor the point.
I hear you. I do worry a lot about the expenses we already incur on the special ed side. And I think that, again, maybe we are, if, there's possibility that we're missing the mark in terms of, of the overall expense and cutting these down the line as well.
I think it's a, I think it's a premature decision before we can see how it, it, it really is run fully fledged. I would like to see it for at least another year. And then I won't, won't be up here anymore. But, you know, if cuts come harsher and faster, then, you know, we might be right back here. And like that's, that sucks and that's the reality. But I think that, at least for me philosophically, in an equity stance versus an equality stance, I think that, you know, the handful of students that are going to benefit the most from this are, are, are worth the struggle that our staff are, if this board decides to, to approve this motion, staff's going to have to go back to the drawing board and it's going to be tough. And they're going to be a little bit upset about having to rework numbers. And everybody is worried about cuts in other places that also are going to impact students. But there has to be solutions somewhere, in my opinion. And that's what we're up here for.
And I'm just going to jump in here for a moment. This is, you know, obviously not about two individuals or really even about saying that we don't value or need these positions. This truly is, we are looking for ways to get our budget in balance. But that said, absolutely. I mean, I think everybody we have in this district has value. And I need to address something that was said earlier that really bothers me. And I just, I, I need to set the record straight here. We had some very disparaged. We had some very disparaging comments made about our IBIs and our school psychologists, and I just want everyone to know, we have outstanding school psychologists, we have outstanding individuals that serve in our IBI positions, and, you know, I'll stand those up against anybody, anywhere. And I'm sure we can do exactly the same thing. Like you said, it is a new program, so we don't, you know, we don't know yet how well that is going to work out, but I'm, I, I know these are wonderful people as well. We've never heard anything bad about the individuals. It is just, is there redundancy that we can eliminate? We've heard no from some people. We've heard yes. I agree that it is, you know, there's just maybe a difference of opinion, but I don't want anybody to leave thinking that we don't have fabulous support staff in our IBIs and our school psychologists. They work very, very hard every single day with really difficult students.
Thanks for, thanks for saying that, as I had the same feelings. With that, let's move on to the vote. Let's start with Ms. Robinson, since it was your motion.
Robinson, aye.
Tennyson, nay.
Conken, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Okay, so the resolution passes with the behavior specialist struck from the layoff list. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here and speaking tonight, including staff, with all these difficult conversations. We have a few items left. I could use a break, but also could try to power through. Is there anybody that's like really, really needing to take a break?
And I think we should use our desire for a break as a motivator to move more quickly and ask fewer questions and make fewer comments.
Okay, just making sure that nobody's hurting. Okay, so we are moving along to 9.3.2, Discussion Action Resolution Number 1637-24, Non-Relection of Probationary Certificated Employees.
Thank you, Madam President. So before you is a resolution. It's, it's an annual resolution. As most of you know, by March 15th, we need to notify our, and, and any non-relected probationary staff. And as you can see here, we have three staff on our non-relection list who have not submitted resignations, hence the, the three student, or staff ID numbers. President Snyder, Charlie Snyder isn't still here, but I wanted to thank him for the, the participation in the conversations we've been having with staff as we've been making these very difficult decisions. Before you, as, as I said, California Education Code 44929.21B provides that the need to be notified prior to March 15th. So these are either Probe One or Probe Two non-relecs who did not resign. You did approve some others who were going to be non-relected, however, they chose to resign, and you approved them on your consent calendar.
All right, any further questions for clarification? Seeing none, public comment? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move this resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tennyson, a second by Ms. Robinson, for the passage of Resolution Number 1637-24. Any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote again. We'll start with you, Mr. Tennyson.
Tennyson, aye.
Conken, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanna make sure Charlie knew that we thanked him. He's back.
Yes, you were thanked while you were absent. I know you were waiting for it all night. Yeah, I, he, yep, hear you. Moving on to 9.4.1, this is under Board. It's an informational first reading of revised, updated, and new board policies.
So you do have in front of you board policies that are being revised and updated, and this is the first reading on those, so if there are questions, we're happy to answer those. But typically, the board will take action on these at our next meeting.
I have a question about some of the language that's in a lot of these, and it's a kind of similar language throughout a lot of them, and it says like, oh, gosh, I should've put a screen of it up here so I could read it, but it was like, no books shall ever be removed from the library that describe, you know, someone's contributions or something like that. You know, obviously, it's very specifically drafted by somebody who wants to put a certain kind of book in libraries and make sure it stays there. Where did that come from?
Legislation.
There's legislation that actually says it should do this? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just for, for the clarification, these board policies were updated. This is like a CSBA standard update that most districts are, are getting because of new legislation that has been passed in the last.
Well, sometimes it's new legislation, other times it's like case law somewhere, but, but, you know, I deserve to be able to ask.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
You're like, I'll put me down.
No. I have to use the bathroom, and I really don't appreciate you making this last any longer. Okay, fantastic. It is a first reading. Obviously, we've perused it a bit. We have another few weeks to look over it further before, I have to. And then it'll come back next meeting for us to approve. Next, next meeting?
Madam President.
Yes?
I would just encourage everybody to read all of them, because there is a lot in what's being submitted.
Yes, I, it's a lot, a lot to read, and so my, my method is to look for the red changes. Read those, and if I'm, if it piques my interest, I'll read more context around it and move right along. Thank you. Okay, next is items on the floor, and that's another opportunity just to address the board. If there's anything else that anybody else has to say that's not on the agenda? Nope, nope. I think everybody here has been able to say their piece tonight. Fantastic. Next is 11.1. This is under Board Member Request to Agendaize Item. Discussion Action, Board Member Request to Agendaize a Discussion Regarding Limitations on Cell Phones at School.
So I floated this out on the, the interwebs about a week and a half ago. Yeah, there's one parent's webpage that's really the gold standard of what do parents wanna need in Chico Unified, and I floated it there. And there was, now, there were some, like, you know, the social media equivalent of raised eyebrows, like, oh, are you sure you think you can take this on, et cetera, et cetera, and some, some, some good questions, but not a single thumb down on any, from anyone. And there were many, 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 many thumb ups. All the feedback that I've had on this has been basically neutral or extremely positive. You know, there's a few neutrals, there are many, many extremely positive parents. I haven't had any, any letters from any students thanking me for bringing this forward in, at this time, but would there be challenges associated with such a policy? Absolutely. But you've already had, we don't normally get email in favor of something at this stage when it's just being put on the agenda. So I think that this, at this stage of the game, anyway, kind of sells itself that we should have a discussion about this for action in the future, not, in the not distant future, cuz it will take some time to implement. Yes, Eileen Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. I'm looking again at where exactly are we on this process, because I have had input from students.
We are, we are in the process of deciding if we're going to put it on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay, then I'll be quiet.
So I move that we put this on the agenda, a future agenda.
I second.
Oh, I was gonna second.
As a discussion action item, to clarify?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, I'm, I also project for you all that I'm gonna take a pretty hard line on this. I actually think we need to get cell phones out of classrooms in, in, in a pretty big way.
Right, so we have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Tennyson and a second by Ms. Conken, and let's do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Tennyson.
Tennyson, aye.
Conken, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Fantastic, all right. We will get to chat it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think.
Special meeting next week, please.
Um, is the, is, is the regular meeting for April, would that be an acceptable timeframe? A month, a month away, the regular meeting?
It really depends on how much staff time that needs to go into this, and I, and I really don't have a feel for that at all, in terms of what kind of research that you want to come back to.
Yeah, I mean, I think that part of this would be just, you could jump into, but fiscal implications for some kind of implementation, if there are any, associated with, with cellphone policies, and what, to what degree we could potentially implement that.
Let me tell you something. It's been, I've been informed that Mr. Gunderson at Chico Junior has a lot of firsthand knowledge of one intervention, let's just say, method, and he's actually, from what I understand, he has actually some experience dealing with this. So you might consult with him. I would ask that you would consult with him on it. I think there's a couple of really valuable media articles. One that was in, I'm gonna pull them up, and I'm gonna share them. I'm not gonna inform you on how to do this, but I'm gonna give you just some resources that I have been made aware of. Yeah. I wanna say San Mateo, I think.
Do you feel like there's enough direction from the board at this time?
I'm sure, Tennyson, we, cuz you said classrooms, or do you mean schools?
I'm open to schools.
Okay.
I think that's unusual. I think that's more unusual, but, but I'm open to it.
Okay, I just wanna know.
Yeah, and I think that that will be a good part of the discussion for us to have, is, is what does it look like at the site level, or if it was gonna be district wider, that's part of that discussion. A motion to adjourn?
This regards what to direct staff to do, adjust FYI, this was one of the topics that the students brought to us at the LCAP meetings. They are interested in seeing the same thing, so I would suggest we ask the students for some suggestions on how to accomplish this. They've got ideas.
Thanks, Eileen. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Thank you.